The Villas Llancas High's Committee of Hall is now in session. Today's date is Monday, June 22nd, 2020. The time is 6:39. Roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumfree.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jeanie Stinson.
Present.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Present.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Present.
Councilwomen. Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin. Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Ass.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
I'm present, babe.
Okay. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Okay, no response. We have six who are present. We do have a quorum.
Vice Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add, under "old business", I wrote it down, to add that we're going to discuss reopening of the basketball courts and parks, under "old business".
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, all right, thank you. First, we'll have Speaker Ms. Dee Peterson from the Villas Llancas High's Tax Administrator.
Good evening, Council. How are you doing today?
Good. Fine, how are you?
All right.
I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed. I'm hoping you're getting all the communication in reference to the filing of taxes. We did have a two-month extension. Everything is due July 15th, 2020. We have been doing robo-calls weekly to let the residents be aware of it. It is in the newsletter. I don't think that we've, you know, left anything out, letting stone unturned. We're scheduling by appointments only, simply because of social distancing. I haven't had a lot of response, so I'm expecting over the next two weeks for our residents to go kind of crazy. But the information has been out there that you can take and file, you can take and call me, I'll send you forms. You can drop the forms off in our lockbox, or you can schedule an appointment. That's where we are there. Our goal, you know, after all this is settled down with the COVID-19, is our goal is to try to start attacking those residents who have not paid taxes. So we will be sending out, the goal is in September, which gives you 60 days between the deadline of July 15th and the extension deadline, which is October 15th. Somewhere in between there, we're going to start sending out notices, you know, being also compassionate that the COVID-19 may have affected your budget, but still, you still need to pay your taxes. You know, at least file them and get them paid. Our goal in 2020 was to start taking accounts to court, but once we discussed that with the prosecutor and the judge, she says we got to put a lot more work into it, instead of just bringing people to court. We have to do multiple notices, sending it out by mail, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and keep a record of when those notices were sent. So hopefully, by the beginning of 2021, we will be able to start taking people to court about their outstanding earnings tax. Hopefully, also, when you're considering your budget for the finance and the tax department, we'll be considering adding us a half a staff, because that's a lot of paperwork to keep track of, and that would be something I would love to take and give someone else's responsibility. Also, for our businesses, we are trying to get everybody into compliance as far as businesses. We'll be talking with our village manager as far as what are we going to do about those who are not in compliance, about their business license and/or their withholding taxes. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I think Vice Mayor had her hand up first. You said that. Okay, I'll come back. That's okay. I'll come back to you. We'll come back to you, Ms. Williams.
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Peterson. So I did receive the letter or notification about the business license fee. I just needed some clarification on what is considered to be operating a business in the village, as opposed to working from home?
Okay. When you're doing your business loss and schedule, it asks for your business address. Okay, and so that's what we're using.
Okay.
You're filing business, you're not a brick and mortar.
Right.
But you are a business that is residing within the village.
Okay.
So I hope that, I hope that explanation that was there was pretty plain. I mean, it didn't have if you're at home or if you're brick and mortar, but it just says if you're operating a business within the village.
And I understand that, but somebody else asked, and I told them exactly what you just said, and got a little bit of an argument from them, and owed them well. I said, "All I can tell you is that you need to, you know, complete the paperwork. If you don't, you're going to have some issues."
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I remember. Is there any way, do we own the Lincoln Heights marquee in front of the school?
You're asking the wrong person.
I'm asking anybody that's out there. I thought we bought that or something, or for a dollar.
In front of the high school or the, I mean, the elementary school?
Yeah. I thought we signed a resolution or something saying that they gave us that to run for safe routes to school.
Not the sign.
But safe, but safe route to school hasn't, we haven't been funded for that yet.
All right, I would just, I thought that that, we had to maintain that. What is that that we maintain?
Are you talking about the right-of-way? That we voted on a right-of-way?
Okay, I was just going to suggest that we put something up there on the marquee about the taxes. That's all. Yeah.
Actually, it'd be nice. Actually, it'd be nice if we look at having one for the village, like the school, and I think a couple of other villages are going with marquees that are digital in front of their municipal buildings. That would be, yeah, they're looking to do that. Ms. Pope? I thought you had a question.
Did Councilwoman Mitchell have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
I came in, I didn't know.
Can y'all hear me? Because I can't hear nothing y'all saying. Shake your head, because I can't hear you.
Yeah, I thought.
Maybe I need to log out and log back in.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
I'm going to leave and come back.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
But Ms. Peterson, did you state that you needed to know what to do with those in, those businesses who have not complied with the business license? I didn't, I came in at that point when you were talking about that.
Oh, no, what I said was that we, what our method of how we're going to get them to comply, I was going to confer with the village manager as far as that concern, because it may involve.
It may involve what?
It may involve us sending a notice out. I've sent out two notices, let's say, for a business who have not complied. So then again, what is my next step?
Well, in the past, if someone has not complied, you shut them down. Because if they don't have a business license, they should not be, they should not be operating.
Sounds like a winner to me.
They should not be operating.
But we have, but we have, I feel like in order for things to work, you must be consistent with everyone. Because I know we did have an issue back in 18, specifically that involved our solicitor with our corner. But they didn't, they started off good, and then they faltered again. So like I said, if you started, we want to be able to do everyone. You know, so that's where I'm at on that point.
Well, as Chair of Finance Committee, we're not getting that amount of money that we're supposed to be getting. We cannot continue to just let it go on, because it'll, it'll continue. But, I mean, Ms. to decide, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you do not have a license, should you be operating?
Nope.
I mean, we've given chances, correct?
Like I said, I sent out notices in December, got a lot of response. I even sent out notices for 2019, that you did not pay your license for 2019, and I got responses. I found a couple of them that kind of slipped through the cracks, so we added them to the list. So we're working very hard to get everybody on the same page. In doing that, I'm reviewing their withholding and their filing of their final term yearly. So that's where I'm catching a lot of it. But again, wearing many hats, so we really need another staff that's going to be able to pick up some of that slack and maintain it. And not only with the businesses, but we also have that same issue with the residency. So the one thing I, well, I mean, I know I'm off on another subject, but the one thing I like to do for residency is that every other community around us has a resident registration. We don't have that in place, and we need to put that in place. So as these landlords, which we are a large landlord community, as they are renting to people, that these residents are filling out a registration so that we know they're here. Yes, Councilman Mitchell?
Yes, yes, Ms. Mitchell.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we do have something on file that talks about resident registration, if you're talking about tenant. I believe Centennial did it one time, but I know that we sent it out. We did that some years ago, when Ms. Matthews was the Finance Director.
The only thing that we're asking for, for tenants, is that you tell us your move-in and your move-out date. But when I say, when I say residence, that means everyone. That means people living in the house.
Oh, I got you.
So I think that at some point, we need to do a resolution as of 1-1-2021. Every resident should be registered, in and out. Because again, we don't know the ones who leave, and I still have them on the books. It's, well, why are they paying taxes? And here they've moved out, whether they are homeowner, renting a house, or renting apartments. And it's not just residential, it's also the commercial. If you are a landlord and you're running just a business, then you're supposed to notify us that this business is here, so then we could go to the business to be sure they have a business license and everything else that goes along with it.
Okay. I do know, Ms. Peterson, years back, when you registered in the school district, you had to go to that municipality and let them, you know, register that you were moving in that school district, and I don't know if the village does that anymore, but I do remember, I mean, several years ago, they did that.
The reason they're not doing it any longer is because now Princeton has open enrollment. So I have not had, I have not had to register one verification since I've been there in three years. Not one.
Hmm.
And I just figured it had to do with open enrollment. You can live anywhere and go to Princeton, so they don't need to verify it.
Hmm, okay. All right, any other questions for Ms. Peterson regarding tax collection?
I asked Ms. to decide to respond, Mayor. To the part about the closing down, if you're not, if you don't have an operating license.
I'm sorry. We can't hear you.
Unmute, unmute yourself, Mr. Decide.
Ms. Mitchell is right. You are not to be operating a business in the village if you do not have a business license.
Well, but what would be the process? You know, we sent, I've sent two notices for 2020. So what would be the process? I sent, just sent a letter, certified letter, saying, "Oh, you don't have your business license, you're not in compliance. We're shutting you down."
If they continue to not comply and ignore the correspondence, then we would have to seek an injunction from the courts.
Okay. Well, I think a bill for the first one and then a second notice, I think that should be sufficient.
That's enough. That's enough.
Yeah.
I agree.
I'll give you a list.
All right.
Is that okay with Council? I can give him a list?
That's okay with me. I don't think we need to vote on that.
Okay. All righty.
Yeah, thumbs up.
See, about it, we're getting it next week.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Ms. Goodwin?
Yes, ma'am. What I want to say in reference to that, I'm okay with him having a list, but can we generate a list at one time so that we're only billed for it once?
Yes, it would be one list.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, if there's nothing further from.
Just one, one piece, clarify, one thing on that. So whether there's one list or several lists, we will have to file separate legal actions against each business.
Okay.
So I didn't know if that answered Ms. Goodwin-Williams' question, but that, you know, we would, we would take those businesses and we would file a separate legal action for an injunction against each one of them. It is possible that after we did that, we could ask the court that took the first case, if they would consolidate them all into one. That would be an efficient way to do it, but at least at the outset, we would have to file separate legal actions.
Okay, well, in that case, I would ask if Ms. Peterson could, you know, do a little bit, not that you haven't, you certainly have, but maybe one more attempt, because legal fees are expensive.
I mean, I can always give them, I can always give them one notice, 15 days.
Okay.
15 days.
Yeah, and so maybe what might make sense here is, once I get the list from Ms. Peterson, if I send out a letter to the businesses on my firm's legal head indicating that, you know, this is the final notice and attached is a draft complaint that will be filed against you.
How's that, how's that, Councilman Goodwin? Does that sound good?
I don't know that, it's still generating additional legal fees, but that's just how I look at it. I just feel like maybe one last ditch attempt from our office, letting them know that legal action will be taken if they do not follow through, so.
Well, if you, I sent the information out to you about businesses and license. And it, it talks about a hundred-dollar fee daily.
There you go.
So I sent that information. Like I said, I'll do it again, and I highlight the penalty, because you're already into six months past the due date.
Right, exactly. Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, I just feel that, you know, we keep giving opportunities when there don't need to be opportunities. So, Mr. Decide, let me ask this question. The concern about your, your, like, steward bill for every 15 minutes that you spend on each one of those licenses that are non-compliant, and is this considered extraordinary fees because you're going to court?
Yes, the answer to both those questions is yes. Now, I, unless there's something you need about. Unless there's something.
Okay.
Unless there's something unique about a particular business, I would suspect that the majority of heavy lifting on drafting the complaint would come with the first one. And after that, we would more than likely just be swapping out names and addresses.
I'm sorry, Mr. Decide, that confused me.
So these are, these are all, I think, the same type of complaints, right? An injunction for failure to pay the business fee, like, well, to obtain a business license. Once I draft the first complaint for Company A, that's where the majority of the legal work comes in on the front end, because it's going to basically be the same complaint, I would think, for Company B and Company C and Company D. You know, I'm just switching out the names and addresses. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's a boilerplate.
I would think at that point, it would be, unless there's something unique that I'm not aware of.
The whole thing just simply looks like you didn't pay your business license for 19, for 2019 or 2020. You haven't paid your withholding tax in order to get your license. You haven't filed a return in order to get your license, because in order to get your license, you must be current on your withholding and you're filing your annual return. Some of them have just totally ignored it and just didn't do it.
So it's, it's not just that they failed to apply for the business license. It sounds like these could be different situations then. In some situations, maybe they applied, but they were denied the license because they were delinquent on one of the other two items you mentioned.
No. Either they applied and we're working with them, or they haven't applied and they still have these other two things outstanding.
Okay, so would, would we be looking then to also address the failure to pay withholding and file their tax return as well with the complaints?
Yes, because, because when they got their application, it says you need to be current on these, whatever the items were, in order for you to get your business license. And instead of getting a response, got no response, and they're just continuing to do business.
Okay. Yeah, so when you email me that list, I'll give you a call, and let's kind of go through it to make sure that I understand exactly what's going on with those. My only thought that kind of entered my mind, I'm not as familiar with our new, I call it the new tax code still, although it's a few years old. I don't know if there's a process in there that we have to pursue first, so I want to take a look at that. But I'll give you a call and make sure that I understand exactly what it is that's causing the issues. I'll look at the tax code to see if there's some administrative process we have to pursue. Typically, that's not on us. Typically, that's on the resident or business center to file an appeal with the Tax Board of Appeals, for example. But I'll just make sure about that. And then if that's not the case, that we don't need to worry about anything administratively, then we would move forward with the complaints.
Well, so somebody also be looking at the current business license, I guess, ordinance, to see if there's something that we need to update on it. Because I think it's pretty plain.
Okay, so this is a different topic, so you'd like, you'd like to, like to update the ordinance as well.
Well, when you say to me that there might be something you have to do because of the tax, but the ordinance talks about your taxes, and you must be current with the application, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's, there's a few moving pieces here. It's not just as simple as they didn't apply for a business license. So send me the list. You know, I'll take a look at it. I don't know, I didn't know this topic was going to come up tonight.
I know.
So I'm just kind of, you know, giving you my off-the-cuff thoughts about it. But send me the list. Let me get a handle on what the actual issues are with them receiving a business license. You know, it sounds like, for the majority of them, there are issues from a tax standpoint, which then are also preventing them from getting the business license. And we'll have to figure out what the best way is to skin that cat, because, you know, the business license is obviously a concern, but the failure to pay withholding taxes and to file returns is, you know, as big, if not bigger, a concern, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, well, thank you for bringing it to my attention, and, you know, look forward to getting the list from you, and then I'll give you a buzz, and we'll get it worked out.
Vice Mayor Stinson?
Yeah, since we're on the subject of taxes, Mr. Deepak, can you look and see if our corner is in compliance and what they signed off on?
I wouldn't know if they were in compliance. Ms. Peterson might be able to tell you that.
Okay, we can look into it later. We don't have to discuss it now. I'll come down and talk to Ms. Peterson or send her an email.
Okay.
But do we not have some type of agreement with our corner from a couple of years ago?
Yeah, there was, there was a settlement agreement. I don't recall specifically what it said, but I thought that basically the, the gist of it was that they were supposed to set up a withholding account. We're supposed to begin paying their withholding taxes and filing their tax returns. So, but I don't keep track of that, right? That, that's, you know, whether or not they pay their withholding taxes, or whether they file their tax returns, I'm not aware of.
That would be Ms. Peterson.
Yeah, so.
That's not the only thing that was in that agreement, so who keeps track of what they said they were going to do in the agreement?
Okay, so what part of the agreement are you referring to, Ms. Stinson?
Anything that they said that they were going to do. Let's, how do we follow up? That's one thing we don't do. We don't follow up. We had those folks sign that agreement, saying that they're going to do this, that, and the other, and we don't know if they did it or not. We just said, "Okay, sign this piece of paper," and that's that. Who follows up with that? Is it the village manager? Is it the attorney? Is it?
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement.
That's not code enforcement that would follow up on that agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, wait a minute, hold on. Okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, because we've been on this topic about 25 minutes, but.
Thank you.
Ms. Peterson, sounds like Vice Mayor is going to be, going to be, she said she was going to be talking with you.
Really, I don't need to have a conversation with her. She only won, one component in that whole situation. I'll call Deepak. I'll call you, Deepak, and we can have a discussion, because Ms. Dee, she, that's only one. I need the whole realm of it.
Well, it sounds like you're going to need to be talking to both of them.
Yeah, but I think I should talk to him first, because he has the, she may not be the only person, might be other people that, somebody, somebody got to follow up with that. That's the bottom line.
Exactly. I agree. Okay, we're going to move on to, thank you, Ms. Peterson. We're going to move on to our next speaker, Mr. Jamal Willis, Villas Llancas High Service Department. He has an update he wants to give us. Jamal, you got it.
Hey.
There you go.
All right, let me stop. All right, I was coming in on, Donna had mentioned something about some streets and doing legged. I'm driving right now, I'm about to stop. So I had mentioned to Donna earlier about trying to finish legged off, if not, do it in a two-year or give it like a two, two-year phase, where you can go from, start at Adams and go all the way down to, I would say, Jackson or Van Buren. And then I assume in 2021, to just go ahead and finish the remainder of the street. Just, I mean, that'd be my, you know, I would recommend doing that, instead of just doing a little patch here and there, because the portion from Adams to Schumardt is already done, so you might as well just key out where they started and finish it off that way. So that would be what I recommend. Also, on catch basins, we don't, all of our catch basins does not need to be rebuilt. Donna has an updated list of, a spreadsheet of, I did it probably four or five months ago, the catch basins that need to be fixed, and it's, we're probably down to about 12 to 15. I would say eight, eight of them need to just be pumped out. They just fill it full of dirt, and a few need to be adjusted to grade. Going mainly on Mango Man, it's, it's like one or two on bills that just need to be adjusted to grade. So I just wanted to update, update you on that. And see whatever your guys' pleasure is about doing it.
Ms. Mitchell, I saw your hand first. You had a question?
Yes, so I guess my question is, in terms of, we talked about this the other night, in terms of legging. So in doing that over a two-year period, I don't think that from Prairie up to Jackson is going to last. What, I think we need to get a cost for that portion, the whole portion, so that we can see what, what we might need to do. And I don't think we were just talking about just patching holes. We were talking about, I believe you said it, Ms. Mumfree, you know, pave that area almost like you did on McIntyre. We know that it is a Band-Aid fix.
So basically, a two-inch mill and pave. That's what you.
I'm sorry.
A two-inch mill and pave, mill it and come back and resurface it. Yeah, that's, that's what I was, that's what I was meaning. I just worded it wrong. I didn't do, not doing patchwork, patchwork, no. Just to mill it down.
We couldn't. We couldn't do that for the whole strip and, and.
I got, I got bids, I got bids on it last year. I got three bids on it last year. I mean, I can, I was going, in the process of getting more this year, just to see if the price changed. The lowest bid was about $89,000 to finish it on off.
Madam Mayor, I just think we need to take a real serious look at that and try to, and try to get that done, give the estimates, and, you know, you can present them at the Finance Committee. And, you know, you can present them at the Finance Committee so we can look at it because I just don't see that part of legging up there surviving.
Right.
Especially with that trailer coming up on there.
Yeah, I got bids.
That is a lot of heavy equipment up there. Councilman Daniels has a question also.
Yeah, Jamal, my question is, I guess, this priority. Because I guess we're getting a lot of pictures and you're seeing a lot of sinkholes throughout the community. And I don't even know if this is even, once again, our responsibility. But would that be something that we might have to now focus taking care of that first before we talk about dealing with the rest of legging? Or is it either or, yes and?
Well, the sinkhole on Lindy, actually what happened, J.K. Muir, they did not set the catch basins properly. So if you go down, that'd be on the, towards the stop signs on both sides, they offset them. So what happens is when the water drains, it's not actually going into the catch basin. It's creating, and water's going to find the easiest way to go. It's creating a hole in the dirt and I'm, I'm not certain, but I believe that's what caused that sinkhole down there on Lindy. Because they offset the catch basins, they post a lock in place, and there is a gap that you can, like, you can see whether, you know, it's not set properly. And I just happened to be cleaning it and I caught it. But, but we're still waiting on J.K. Muir to come out here. They're supposed to come Friday and they didn't come, nobody showed up.
Okay, I see.
So, Ms., okay, so Mr., where'd he go? Oh, there you are now. They shift you around. So, Mr. Willis, so you'll be getting three or four es, three estimates on different segments, the entire street and then segments?
Of, yes, I believe Donna was legged and we're trying to, I just wanted to keep it balanced. So you know, like I discussed earlier, you know, up the hill, down the hill, but legged is probably the, that's the number one priority, I would say.
Yes.
So I would get a bid on legged. And I believe when I had J.K. Muir, they was going to stripe it. So I believe the stripe was an extra 7,000. So I believe that around 90,000, it would have been with everything. I don't know if you guys want it striped now or you want to wait on it with the crosswalks and all that stuff. But, I mean, either or, I can get it. It's no problem.
Okay, all right. So you'll be having that for finance?
Yes, I would just, I will call, I left, I will call two more contractors just to have four instead of three and be ready to present it.
Ms. Pope, thank you, Jamal.
Now, one more thing.
Oh, go ahead.
One more thing, now, when you're dealing with asphalt, sometimes they can book. So if we want to get this done, I would say I don't want to act on it immediately because around November, they, these, these companies start to close and also these asphalt plants shut down. So sometimes if, you know, don't have the work approved by like September, they might not be able to get you squeezed in because they, they close in the winter time. I just wanted to let you guys know. Not saying that we would do that, but I just wanted to just throw it in the air just to have.
So basically, we need to find, get this taken care of before we go on leave in August?
Yes, because some of them could be booked up and then they'll tell you, you have to wait till the end of the year. And if they do it in the winter time, the cost is going to double because the plants don't open in the winter.
Okay. Ms. Pope?
Okay, my computer kept going in and out, but wait a minute, I got to put a pause on everything that Jamal just said. It's not as simple as us just doing those streets. Anything over 50,000, we have to bid that out. We're not going to be able to afford that whole stretch from Adams to Prairie. We're not going to be able to afford that because it's going to cost more than $100,000. And then we have to bid it out. So that's going to be a process. We have to get our engineers involved. For what I asked Jamal to do was to get quotes from Adams to Jackson because that stretch is really terrible. And then the stretch from Wild Bash to Prairie, that stretch is really terrible. Then those few streets in between, Jamal and his staff can do those. Some of the, just the pothole refills. But there's no way that we can do the whole stretch and then we don't have the time. It's going to take more than a couple, I mean, before August. We won't be able to get that done before August.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that. It's not as simple just saying we need to get it done. It's not going to be that easy because that the, to, to make it look like Adams to McIntyre, I mean, to Schumard is going to be more than what we have available in funds.
Right, right. Ms. Mitchell, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, basically, some, somewhat of what Donna said. I wasn't talking about paving it like J.K. Muir did. I was just talking about how the village did it. Didn't we do it for McIntyre?
No, oh, no, we paid somebody for that.
Oh, but how much was that?
That was 10,000.
And I'm saying that that strip from, from Wild Bash to Prairie is, is bad. But it would seem to me that what our, our guys could do would be that. I'm not looking for a whole entire, you know what I'm saying, dig up just to smooth it out, just like we did on McIntyre.
What do you think, Jamal?
Well, we, we did that other, that one side, well, that'd be the western side of the street last year. It'd just be, we'd just have to plant it and, and section it off. We could finish that off. That's no problem. We did it last year in August. We did the left side. We just didn't come back and do the right side of the street.
Okay.
And then another thing, we need to, we need to make sure that we have the proper equipment to do. We don't want a lumpy, lumpy patch-up job that we had, like we did on Jackson. We want something better than that. So we want to make sure that we have the equipment that Jamal and his staff can roll it out properly, cut it out properly, seal it properly. We don't want just, you know, them to just throw it down there and just fill the potholes. We want it done smoothly. So if we can't do that, then we have to contract that out with, he's going to get bids or he's going to get estimates on those type of jobs.
Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you, Ms. Pope. Thank you, Mr. Willis.
All right.
All right, we got to move on to old business. And your packet that I had Ms. Randolph send you all, it had to do with our committee action plan. I know we've gotten away from it. For two years, we had our goals for our standing committees. And so with everything going on with COVID, I figured it was time for us to try to implement what we can control and what we can possibly work on before. We don't know how things are going to go toward the fall. But so she has put that in everyone's packet like we had used before when it comes to law, recreation, safety, economic development. We need to begin to talk about what we would like the rest of the year to look like as far as our conversations that we plan to have and what we're going to try to implement the remainder of 2020. So we're, we have like about what, five, six months left of 2020? And so I'm asking all committees, when you all begin to meet the first of the month, to actually come up with what you would like to see happen in your committee so we won't keep talking about it and we never implement it. I know when it came to junk cars, that question and conversation is still out there along with the nuisances. When we talk about code enforcement, that is something that our safety chair has been pushing to try to see some, some results. When we talk about finance, that's ongoing because that's something we have to always talk about. But I know when we talk about the budget and all that that's going on. When we talk about Habitat for Humanity, it's quite economic development. But we also want to see what can we do or conversations we can be, begin to have when we talk about development. Because like you all know, they're only going to build so many houses. It's up for us to start looking at. One of the topics last year was how we can finish building out Martin Luther King Estates. I haven't heard that conversation anymore since last year. Recreation, I haven't heard anything talk about Lincoln Heights State for 75 years. But I know with the COVID, but I think we need to start having the conversation because we at least can start sending letters out, working on letters to try to see who, when you talk about sponsors for next year, we can't wait till the end of December to have these conversations or plan events. So when you all come back, our next first meeting in July, I would like to, to ask you all, what are your plans are for the rest of 2020? Off of looking, I would say, look at the old list from 2018. If you don't have it, I will have Ms. Lisa send that to you along with some of the inserts for 2019 just for us to get back to what we're down there to do. Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
Mayor, the Finance Committee would not be able to do that. The first, we don't meet till the third week. So we can come back at the second meeting of the month.
Right, right. But if you have something from previous that you would like to implement, you can mention that when we come back on the 13th of July. I think it's the 13th, our next council meeting. It's just that I think we've gotten away, away from with all this COVID going on, what we are, what our goals are. And even though we can have goals, what, what would we like to see happen for 2020? If we can do all, do it all and what we want to try to, try to do for 2021. A lot, some of the things won't happen till 2021, but we need to start having the conversations. Okay, any questions regarding the Standing Committee Action Plan? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have the, do you have the one from last year? The forms that were completed from last year?
I have the 2018 with me, but I can get her, I can have Ms. Randolph look for those and send them on to you guys this week.
Thank you.
That way you'll know where you left off at and what you want to add in to do for the rest of the year, even if, you know. Because I know we never got, even, even probably trying to bring some of the things that we talked about in 18. So I'll send y'all the 18 information. I'll send that checklist. I have that. I'll send that to you guys in the morning. And that way you may want to pull something off the list that you had for 2018 that you might want to do in 2021. Because some of the stuff like, like the car show, we ain't going to get to do that this year, but maybe next year. I know they had tried to plan it two years in a row, but it never transpired. So just wanted to get back, want to get back to the basics and try to get our committees moving forward. Okay, next is Mr. Desai has asked us to make sure that we discuss about reopening the basketball and playground area. Any conversations on it? I saw Vice, Vice Mayor, I saw your hand go up first.
I, I can start and this, this is just my opinion. And with the recent spikes in our neighborhood, I don't think it's a good idea right now. And I'm not saying not to ever open it back up, but until we can get those numbers under control and with this recent testing, free testing that we have on Sundays, the cases could go up. I just think it, we need to be responsible and just say no to that.
Would that be for basketball and, and the Memorial Field?
I think that would be for everything.
Okay.
Now, I don't know how sports work and how schools are going to do sports and this, that, and the other. I hate for our kids not to be able to participate, but I also hate for them to die.
Yeah, Mr., I got to ask Mr. Daniels a question. Mr. Daniels, were you able to communicate with the Lincoln Heights Tigers? I know we had mentioned it.
Yeah, I've talked to, I talked to Coach Franklin as of, as of last week. I told him, like I said, we obviously got to talk about it more amongst ourselves. But, yeah, I, I mean, I'm kind of in agreeance with Vice Mayor even on that situation. You know, I felt a different way, but obviously, especially now we have the free testing site here, our numbers are going to go up. I would, though, like for us to at least come up with some type of, you know, when we do what that looks like. So it's not like, when is that time? Now we have to wait a whole another three months just to get them set in place. Like, we can already set aside, okay, we're going to open this up first. This is how it's going to look. You allow so many people in there. You got to watch this and this. We can already set those things up in place now. But I do agree with Vice Mayor, especially given the fact that we do have the new testing center here. We do, I think we do have to do our due diligence to be responsible as well, so.
It's Mitchell.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry.
So, Mayor, you know, I agree. I think that we should not open up the basketball court. And there were people up on the field the other day. People up on the field. I want to say it was Sunday, Saturday or Sunday. So are we, do we have a contract or is that the football team? Who was that that was up there on the field?
Probably was the football field. I'm sure it was the football field. We need to reach out to, we need to reach out to them because you don't want to just say, go over there and say, oh, we need to call them and let, we need to call them, Ms. Pope, and reach out to them. Vice Mayor?
Maybe we should just post a sign.
Exactly.
We need to post a sign and maybe do a robocall saying, due to the COVID and the spike, the parks and this, that, and the other are closed. He may not live in the village, but if we had a sign, they would see it.
Yeah, exactly.
But he's registered, so he already, he probably on the robocall because they are registered, right?
I wouldn't have that information. Which ones first? Councilman Daniels?
I'm, oh, do we know? I didn't know, I didn't know somebody was on the, do we know who it was? Because I.
I have no idea. I just saw them up there practicing and all the cars, about six cars behind the building, behind building.
Did we call the sheriffs to, to ask them to go over there?
No, because I, I mean, I didn't call because I didn't know what the, what had already been set up. That's why I'm bringing it up now. So if we have not opened it up, or maybe we had.
Okay, well, yeah.
I haven't seen anything official from, from us at all.
Well, is there a sign saying, don't come on the field? If there's not a sign saying, don't come on the field, then people going to go on the field. Like Vice Mayor said, we have to post something. You don't have, don't come on the field, then people going to probably go.
You're going to have to lock that gate. You're going to have to lock the gate that they enter through. You have to do more than just the sign. You have to lock that particular gate, the small one.
Ms. Pope?
Okay, the signs went up when it first started. We, I don't think we've ever taken them down. Mr. Willis probably can respond on that. And the gate is locked, but from what I understand, there's a hole in the gate. And so I don't even know who the coach is except for the one guy that I met last year. And nobody's come down here to fill out any kind of form or anything. They, and as far as them being parked in the back area, if they were on the elementary side, that's Mr. Clark's property.
They weren't on that side. They were on, they were on the high school side, yes. And, you know, the, the barriers were removed.
Mr. Willis, do you know? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, you can go ahead. I'll come back because you want, you asking Mr. Willis a question. Jamal?
You're on mute. Jamal, you're on mute.
Okay, the, the, the two gates should be locked if I'm not mistaken. We never took that sign down. It might just be faded away. It's the same sign that's on the basketball court. But mind you, I mean, it's still access to the field because there are multiple holes in the gate. And, you know, that's, that's been an ongoing problem. But far as behind the YMCA, I mean, the barriers are still there unless the chain was cut.
Vice Mayor, wait a minute, Ms. Mitchell, she had her hand up first. I'll come back.
Okay, since, since we know that the fence is, is damaged, is there anything that we can do to fix that? Not fix it all the way, but make it so that people can't get in? Because if somebody gets hurt, we're liable. You know, it, it's just for safety reasons. If we know it's a hole, just like if we know it's a, a sinkhole, we're going to make sure we cover that sinkhole up, right? So why, we should do the same thing for the fence, maybe. That's just my opinion.
I mean, yeah, but I mean, that's been an ongoing problem for years. I mean, you, you close, you lock the gate, it's a hole cutting the fence. And then you fix that fence, then it's another hole cut. It's, it's probably about seven, eight different hoses in the fences up there. Some, some are in the wooded area and then it's like three or four at the top. And then it's another gate at the top, but that gate don't work no more. So it's basically inoperable.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell, and then I'll come back to Councilman Daniels.
So, Mayor, I think that if that's the, I have questions. If the sign is faded, is the sign a paper sign or is it a?
It's. It's laminated, unless, that's that's the signs that we have.
Oh, okay, so maybe we need to get a more durable sign. And secondly, then we need to ask the sheriff to patrol that during the time that the football would be there. They needed, they needed to patrol it on Saturday and Sunday. They need to have set time to they patrol it, and if they see any activity up there, because they they sit there sometimes, and we have to say that is a priority, and they need to do that.
Yeah, they probably don't know, though, that we're saying no, don't use.
Exactly.
All right, uh, one more question, then we're gonna move on. Go ahead, Mister Daniels.
Well, I was just letting you guys know, I just talked to Mister Larry Franklin, when the presence of Lincoln Heights Tigers, and he said there was not them on the field. They have not started anything, so we need to figure out who that is. And so I suggest anytime somebody sees somebody out there, we need to call the sheriffs ASAP, so we can deal and find these corporates who are coming in our community and making us unsafe.
That's good, Mayor. Can we get a letter out?
Hold on, hold on, Miss. All right, Ms. Jeter raised her hand in between you jumping in. Go ahead, Ms. Ms. Jeter.
Uh, they need to be given a schedule of the activities on that field. If there is not a schedule, then they will know that they cannot be on that field. You know, but if it's a weekend activity, it is hard to get to them other than through the manager, so we just need to let them know, no one should be on the field until we give them a schedule or let them know who's using the field. And then I had the two again, had to go through the manager.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we gotta go on to new business, um, so we can get to our regular.
And we'll make that happen uh tomorrow. I've talked to uh Ms. Pope.
Okay, Ms. Pope, you still got your hand up, because we about to go into the resolutions?
Okay, I'll just talk about it during the resolution.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, okay, the first resolution is Resolution twenty twenty R sixteen, approving the process to receive and disperse coronavirus relief funds. Is that the one you wanna talk about, Ms. Pope?
No.
Any questions on Resolution twenty twenty R sixteen? Uh, the next is Resolution twenty twenty R seventeen, appointing Dolores Lindsay to the Planning Commission. Any questions? Next is Res- Yes, ma'am.
So is that the only, is that the only um spot that is open?
Yes.
Okay.
But I will double check. Actually, when we have our next council meeting, uh we'll be voting on some chair, uh on some members on boards and commissions at the next council meeting. Okay, next is Resolution twenty twenty R eighteen, adopting, the resolution adopting the twenty twenty one tax budget for the Village of Lincoln Heights for the fiscal year beginning January one twenty twenty one and submitting the same to the Auditor of Hamilton County. Any questions on that? On that?
Just a comment there?
Yes, sir.
So twenty twenty dash R dash eighteen is just up for a first reading tonight.
Okay.
But I have a question on it.
Did you wanna go ahead and ask?
Yes, um, so in reading the number one, we we don't, we never establish the position of assistant manager. So goodness, just simply say that the Finance Director has supplied the village or whatever, because the Finance Director is supplying herself the information. Um, we had the conversation that um, we know that Mister Dukes wanted to um set Ms. Pope up as the assistant manager, but we have no position stating that. So to me, can't we just say the Finance Director, how do you set something up for yourself? It, you know, the positions are supposedly the same, a- and the same thing in um the the first resolution with the uh Co- COVID funds, you're talking about the Finance Director, the Assistant Manager, and the the manager. When we don't have an assistant manager, we have nothing on file for that. We, I know that that's what Mister Dukes wanted, um, the Finance Director to assume some of those duties, but so I I guess I'm pulling the tech on the semantics, the wording of the uh resolution.
Mister Decide, you wanna add to that?
Not really.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarification.
Well, I I need clarification. So do we have assistant manager?
That's me.
But but where was that?
Which one said that? I had my head down. It's, it's me, Ms. Pope, go ahead.
So we had discussed it and discussed it, and we talked about it, approved it, didn't didn't like it. But he gave me a letter saying that I was Assistant Village Manager slash Finance Director.
We don't have that on our records. We don't have that position. So I, Mister Dukes, I think is out of turn to do that, because he needs to, any position that new position that is established comes before council. I'm not saying that we wouldn't approve it, but the point being, he is, he did not do what he is supposed to do. Uh, Mister, I may not wanna respond to it, but, you know.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I thought, I thought that we had taken care of all of this, even to the point where we we ordered signs to say Assistant Village Manager. She's been Assistant Village Manager for for quite some time now. We call her that. You know, I I, if it's something that needs to be a position, that needs to be posted and other people apply for, that's what you're saying, right, Ms. Mitchell?
No, I'm just saying that we need to establish the position.
Mister Dukes did. He gave her a letter. He established.
No, 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 it's done by council. Council sets the position. Where I haven't seen it, I, unless I wasn't at the meeting, I'm just saying, I haven't seen anything that come across with a description for the Assistant Manager. I have not, I haven't seen it. So if we have it.
So when you say description, you mean like a job description?
Description, and you have to counsel establishes, not the manager. The manager may say, I want this position, okay, just like Ms. Peterson said, she thinks we need to have this other position. And remember, uh about two years ago, we talked about trying to get a part-time position in there. I don't think we ever passed that either. So if we're going to establish a new position, council does that, and we pu- we pass it, and then it's put into um, put into effect, so.
I like the motion that we uh 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 establish an Assistant Village Manager. I like the motion there.
I second.
Second, second. And then, I know it's a time for questions.
Wait a minute, wait it, you're you're in the, you're in, you're in, you're in the middle of motions, so hold on, let me get so for Miss Randolph to write this down. So Miss uh Vice Mayor Stinson made the motion. Councilman Daniels made the second.
And then if I could just state something, I I think if we're gonna do something like that with the motion, I think it'd probably be better to do that at the regular council meeting as opposed to council of the whole.
Yeah.
Which one it was?
Yeah, I was gonna say, hold on, you gotta vote it with that one. So that's, have that motion for that. Thank you, Mister Decide. Yes, Ms. Jeters?
I have a couple of questions. Number one is that uh to Ms. Pope, are you cu- uh currently being paid for that assistant position? Okay, so that, that part has already been established by Mister Duke, so I think what we need to do before we uh uh take care of this in council is to find out what it is that he's talking about, and then make a motion to create that position, not just for her or for anybody. When we jump to these things and we don't have all the information, we get ourselves in trouble. Because I too thought this had been resolved. I also thought that the clerk, the additional person part-time, had been resolved. So I'm confused at this point. We need to gather research, get the information, and then proceed with a motion to establish that position. The position needs to be on paper if we're paying her for that. So, well, the description, yeah, so let's not just jump on things and bounce up and down on them. Let's just wait and find the facts before we get ourselves in trouble. Mister Duke will be back soon, I, I I guess, and then he can insert what he did. And perhaps what he has done is okay, we just need to vote on it and put the job description in the book. The job description must be there as to what that person is doing in case uh Ms. Donna is the future manager and there's an assistant for her. Okay, so whoever's in that position, you need to have written information, I believe. Is that correct, Mister Decide?
Which part of that do you want me to answer? I thought was
Love it, probably all of it. Job description.
So, you know, I'm just looking at the charter right here, uh what the powers of council are. And under Article Two, Section two point zero five, number two says, establish administrative departments or commissions and define those departments duties. Uh, number three is adopt a personnel pay plan. And I was just starting to look through here, because I wanted to go back to what I believe Ms. Mitchell said was that for the position of Assistant Manager to be um in existence, council had to authorize it, if I understood what she was saying correctly. And so I'm just trying to find some authority for that.
Can I, I thought we had some type of legislation, but I cannot remember what it was, not off the top of my head.
Research, research, research.
Can I, can I answer one part of that question? Okay, for the Finance uh Clerk, we did, you guys did approve that position and everything, but that position was cut on the twenty twenty budget. The the, not the position itself, but to hire someone, because we couldn't afford it. And by the time we hired Mister Dukes, eh, I went back into my regular position, and Dee was already in her position. Now Dee has been talking about still, she wants to hire a assistant. I mean, you know, somebody in there to help her with the taxes. So, um, uh, but that position, I mean, to hire that person was cut out because of the funding.
But the position exists now.
Yes, it does. We, you approved it and everything last year. You voted on the position duties and everything.
Right, because that's what we're supposed to do when new positions come up.
So Mister Decide, with, when it comes to Resolution twenty eighteen, well, what are we gonna do? We're gonna first read uh first reading only, or what?
So, yeah, the one on the tax budget um does not need to be down uh until uh, I think it's, what is it, Donna, the third day, third Monday of the month?
The twentieth, yes.
So, um, what I would say is a first reading on R eighteen, um, let's clear up any issues about the language before the first meeting in July, because council, I think, would need to pass it at the first meeting in July. My, do I have my date right? See, July thirteenth is a Monday, and that would be council's first meeting. So let's just do a first reading on R eighteen tonight, and then we'll clear up this um uh, this issue about uh whether council needs to authorize the creation uh of a Assistant Manager position.
Okay, all right, thank you. All righty.
One more question on that, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
We were supposed to um uh go over the final version of the twenty one, twenty twenty one tax budget today. Um, but we pretty much did that in the uh Finance Meeting on Monday. So do you need any, do, does council need any other information as far as the tax budget is concerned from me?
Probably, they may wanna see the final, uh, the final draft before you send it.
Right.
But we went over all of the levies and the different departments that, I mean, committee meetings, except for infrastructure. And we talked about that also in finance, so, um, and, um.
Should that be attached to the ordinance? Should it be attached to the resolution?
It's gonna be attached to it once that resolution is passed.
So should it say that it's going to be attached as Exhibit A or just?
Uh, yeah, that's how he normally does it, Exhibit A.
Okay.
But it doesn't say that.
So when he does make the corrections to clear up the languages, that needs to be added into that, then, showing that there's an exhibit. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay, yes.
Yes, yes, it has to have it in the, in the, uh, it has to have it in the body of the legislation. Okay, all right, uh, let's move on to the next one. Resolution twenty twenty R nineteen, Resolution authorizing the renewal of the agreement with the Village of Woodlawn for the Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services for the Village of Lincoln Heights, Ohio. Any questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You can go, you can go first, DeBak, because you might answer my question.
I was just gonna say, this is just up for a first reading, if I remember the conversation from the Safety Committee meeting last Monday. Um, we were going to do a reading for this last meeting in June, and then a second and third reading for our meetings in July, with passage at the July meeting, the second July meeting. Um, one of the uh items that was raised was that um Mister Dukes wanted to speak with Woodlawn about um some matters in the contract. So the thought was that that would give him time to have those conversations, and we could incorporate uh any changes into the resolution.
Okay, so this is gonna be a first reading only also?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Answered the question.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell?
So if, um, do we know when Mister Dukes is coming back? Because when are we gonna be able to know what the changes might be in the contract? Um, are we gonna know that within um three weeks? So that we can look it over? If he has some concerns about the uh the contract, how will we? I mean, will
Yes, I can call him and ask him.
I'm, can we do that with him being on FMLA? That's my concern.
Well, I don't think, you you can't um ask him uh to work, right, if he's on leave. Um, but I think Ms. Pope would just be contacting him to determine whether or not he's gonna be back, um, you know, in a timely manner for the purposes of the contract. Um, my recollection of the discussion last Monday was, um, I didn't really hear any items that people, let me rephrase that, the council members wanted to add or subtract from the contract. Um, I may be remembering that incorrectly, but I don't recall any um recommendations for amendment to the contract. So if we do get to the July meeting, the first July meeting, and for some reason Mister Dukes is not able to return to his post, I think at that point, you just move forward with the renewal. Um, bear in mind, there is a termination provision uh in the contract uh uh without cause. So, you know, if we got down the road and for some reason there was a major uh item that needed to be uh addressed, the village still has the ability to terminate the contract. Uh, what what we're doing here is just trying to get that notice to Woodlawn, which has to go um roughly by um the end of September. We have to give them ninety days of notice before the contract ends, which is December thirty first. So roughly by the end of September, we need to get that notice to them. And so that was the reason we were putting it forth now. But again, I think if if Mister Dukes is unable to return to his post prior to uh, you know, the July meetings, when we'll be voting on this, um, I think at that point, council moves forward. um, I think at that point, council moves forward with renewing the contract, if that's their desire. And then if there are issues that come down the pike, you know, in the future, uh, we can always do that through an amendment or through termination.
Okay, all right, Vice Mayor.
I, I, I just wanna say this for the record. I have confidence that Ms. Pope will do whatever, step in as the role of Mr. Dukes. I think that she kinda know what he wanted to do, right? Yeah, okay. Yes. There were some, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, there were some updates that um to that contract. So uh, Mr. Desai, like the equipment, are we gonna pass the contract, but we need to take that out? Because in the old uh contract, we were um giving them uh ownership of uh various pieces of equipment. So if we're gonna pass that contract, that needs to be updated.
Mm-hmm. Well, it wouldn't really be, we're really not um doing a new contract. All we're doing is renewing the term of the current contract. So instead of it being a three-year term, we're now turning it into a six-year term.
I thought it was just gonna be a three year.
I thought it was three.
Well, the original, yeah, the original term was three years, and now we're gonna renew for another three year.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Good. All righty. And so does that mean?
Wait a minute, I thought Ms. Jeter's hands was up first, and she put them back down. Well, I put them down because Mr. Desai is talking, and we need to use our tools at the bottom, and all the raised a little hand in the box, so we all won't be doing all this. But uh, uh, it was a continuous of what we already had, and Mr. Desai said that. So no one didn't say that they didn't want to continue with that three-year contract, but from my understanding, you can uh decide to uh amend that contract at a different time. So we gotta get something through so that uh they, so that Woodlawn can deal with that.
Okay, all right, Ms. Mitchell, last question.
So I, this is to Ms. Pope, so Ms. Pope, you saying that there was something about the equipment? Does that um, that he wanted to change, meaning that it has already been purchased? That's what I don't understand. And so, Mr. Desai, are you saying that we don't have to um change anything? So at first, I just wanna know, what was it that Ms. Pope said that he wanted to do with the equipment?
No, there was, there's equipment in the previous contract. There's a, there, there's a list of things that we were giving them ownership. So I was thinking, under, if you're gonna continue with that contract, that is still gonna be in there, so don't you need to update and take that out? Because now it's not, it's not pertinent to this contract. That would be, they already have the equipment. That would be a new contract. That would be a new contract. We're not doing a new, we're doing a continuing. Right.
Right, so they will keep, they will keep it, they will, you know.
Yeah, they still keep it, yeah.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, next is Ms. Delaney's business. Okay, on this one. Okay, is there a motion for adjournment for a committee of the whole?
No move.
I didn't hear the first motion.
So.
Okay, Councilman Daniels' motion. Vice Mayor, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the regular council meeting.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Please let it be five minutes, please.
It's seven fifty-three. See you guys at seven fifty-eight.
Thank you.
All right. Kathy, I'm waiting on this Jeter.
You there, Phyllis?
Phil is there. I wonder, is that her number down there? Five one three one seven, that number on the back end.
Is she muted, or you have her muted?
No.
Oh, she got herself muted, okay.
There she go. Okay, all right. Okay, you ready? Ms. Randolph, you ready?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here. I'm ready, I didn't know my mic was muted.
All right, the Village of Lincoln Heights regular council meeting is now in session. Today's date is Monday, June twenty-second, the time is eight o'clock. Roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jeanie Stinson. Vice Mayor.
Present.
Councilman Doron Stitt. Doron Stitt. Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Present.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Present.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Presence.
We have seven who are present, Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Okay, motion order for acceptance of the agenda.
So move to accept the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Daniels. All in favor?
Aye.
May's. Motion order for filing of the journal for the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from June eighth and regular council meeting minutes from June twenty, uh, June eighth. What's your pleasure, council?
I'd like to make a motion to accept with any needed corrections.
Second.
There's a second by Councilman Daniels. Okay, announcements. Councilman Daniels, any announcement for you?
Ma'am.
Oh, you said no?
Yes, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Okay, all right, uh, Ms. Jeter, is there any announcements for you?
Yes, uh, complete the uh twenty twenty census and register the vote. Thank you.
All righty. Ms. Baber, any announcement?
No announcement.
Okay, all right, Ms. Goodwin-Williams?
Yeah, I have a brief announcement. I just wanna say um to Councilman Daniels, thank you so much for putting together um the protest march you did for the um the firing range. So I just wanna quickly acknowledge um here, I know we've had some difference of opinion in the past in terms of how to get to where it is that um I think we both want to get to in terms of um seeing this village move forward. And um, I'm excited about what you guys are doing and am willing to lend what I know and what you guys are trying to do to move for, move this village forward. So I, I, I'm definitely looking forward to um your team members that are here in the village, you live here, preparing themselves to take these seats, because one thing's for sure, I certainly did not come on council to be a lifelong council uh member. So looking forward to um preparing, helping you prepare them to move me out of the way. Thank you.
Yes, thank, yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Kathy.
Right, Vice Mayor, any announcement for you?
Oh, I'm not muted. Um, I did have an announcement, but it was stolen.
Okay, all right, Ms. Laverne Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have an announcement, but I do want to um, um, thank the uh Phyllis Baber um and the Recreation Committee, I guess, that's who uh put on the, the graduation. Um, I didn't see many cars. Um, I don't know how many students um participated, but um I know that uh when it comes to serving food and doing events, Ms. Baber does know um how to do that. And I saw that you and um Ms. Jeter were in the parade, so um at least you went through and recognized those students that were with you, that was good.
Okay, all right. Um, the announcement I have is for the three families um that their homes were dedicated with Habitat for Humanity Saturday uh right before the um graduation parade. And those three homeowners uh will be closing at the end of June into the three houses that are on Jackson Street. So I want to welcome them. One is uh Oga and Mr. Henry, they um are residents of Lincoln Heights, so they were able to also purchase them a home. So we're thankful that they decided to stay in Lincoln Heights and get a house built along with the two new families that have children that will be attending Princeton um High School and the Lincoln Heights Elementary. So we have a couple of families with children that are moving into the Village of Lincoln Heights. And I have informed them that we'll make sure that when the newsletter goes out, that they will um, that they will be um, they will be um. All right, so that's all, that's all that I have.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I can't hear you.
We, we couldn't hear the last, what you stated. We couldn't hear the last part of what you stated about the three families.
Oh, okay, okay, I was just, okay, I was just welcoming uh them to the Village of Lincoln Heights and just letting everybody know um that they have children that will be attending Princeton uh Junior High uh and High School and also the Lincoln Heights Elementary School. So we're thankful that these new residents are uh coming into the Village of Lincoln Heights. That's gonna create additional revenue as far as the property taxes and earning taxes, because all three uh women um and residents that moved in, they all work. And so that was uh something that uh when they did talk about all the struggles that they had to overcome to move in the Village of Lincoln Heights, they also mentioned to let everybody know that they do have jobs, uh because we do know that there's a myth when it comes to Habitat for Humanity that they are low income. But some of them, uh, one of them, one of the individuals was actually a nurse, worked at Children's Hospital. So we wanna welcome them into the community, and they'll be closing at the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be um. No, we don't have any hearing from the residents. Um, Ms. uh, Ms. Randolph, did you get anything from any residents wanting to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Uh, I did want to uh let everybody know that um the family of uh Mayor Susan Upton-Fawley did send us a card to thank us for the flowers that were given at her, at the, at Mrs. uh the mayor, to always be our mayor, Mayor Susan Upton-Fawley. The family wanted to give their thanks for us as a village sending flowers to her um funeral. All right, uh, any communications, Ms. Randolph?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, and nothing from me. Ms. Donna Pope, any announcements, communications from you?
Yes, um, the newsletter, um, I wanted to let you guys know the newsletter is complete, and she um forwarded that to the printers on Friday.
for our summer edition. Um, there is a webinar on the twenty fourth, which is Wednesday, that I will be attending to help us further understand what we can and cannot submit for reimbursement for the Home Cares Act Fund. That's on, uh, Wednesday is a, a webinar for that. We have started to order, uh, equipment for the Census twenty twenty, uh, utilizing that grant, um, like a kiosk machine. Uh, we have to do some marketing material. We have to do a kickoff event, which we'll be contacting Ms. Linda Childs-Jeter. In case you didn't know, for that, so we can have a kickoff for that. I did receive a phone call from Census and they're gonna start with the new, uh, numerator positions. They're gonna, uh, have them start going door to door for July, in July. Or we would, uh, they'll notify us in July. I did sign up to be a numerator. And, um, so I'm wanting to plan the kickoff event around the same time so we can get, um, we can get our part of the census off the ground. Hopefully we'll be able to hire, uh, our contract out, maybe, you know, a few of the kids so they can pass out some, uh, marketing material. Because we have, uh, the grant was awarded for ten thousand dollars, so there's some things that we can purchase with that. Under the code enforcement at ten twenty-three bills, uh, we do have, uh, um, demolition funds through CDBG, twenty thousand dollars. She did send me, she being Emily, um, she did send me the application for the process of getting that house, uh, torn down. And Mr. Willis is gonna be working with me on that, so we can, um, you have to make sure there's no electricity, uh, just a, uh, different steps that you have to go to through in order to get it torn down. Make sure he's not actually living there or, um, I was told that he, sometimes he pulls up and he's in a van or something like that. So we have to make sure that we go through all the processes. And then, and then we have to send it out for bid. They said we can ask for, uh, contractors that we've used in the past. Uh, we can ask for, uh, a bid opposed to putting it in the newspaper. Um, so we can do that, but there are different steps that we have to go through. And, uh, Jamal is gonna help me with, uh, with the electrical, the plumbing and all of the other stuff, um, that needs to be done to get that home torn down. I rece, in the Finance Department, I did receive a call from our state auditors. The audit is gonna start on the twenty ninth, which is Monday, for eighteen and nineteen. Um, we're still going back and forth on whether they're gonna be here on site or if we have to, um, scan them documents. It's, it's most likely gonna be easier for them to be here on site because they are away from us and we do have, uh, a lot of PPE equipment that we can, you know, put up in this office. We can put up the divi, um, the, the, not the dividers, but what, yeah, those things where you don't...
Shields.
Shields, thank you. We can put up the shields. We do have masks. We do have gloves and, um, sanitizers and everything like that, so we can, you know, provide them their own space where they won't be around the rest of the employees. Um, in the Service Department, we did talk to, um, I did talk to J.K. Mueller about the Usinko on Lindy and Leggett. They were supposed to, I think Jamal, Mr. Willis had already told you about that. They were supposed to come out Friday. They didn't come out Friday. So I'll give them a call back because, um, I'm assuming they didn't come out today. And I talked to Stephanie and Stephanie is our engineer from CT Consult, Consultants. And she said they are basically responsible for that, so, um, he was supposed to get out here. He didn't. I'll give him a, I'll start bugging him again tomorrow and make sure he gets out here. So... Going back to the Finance Audit, they're gonna do a post audit and they're not gonna do a pre. They're gonna do a post with all this COVID nineteen. The less contact we have with them, you know, the better. So we're just gonna limit that to a post audit. But I'll be keeping you up to date on, um, different things that they're asking for. So... I think that, oh, Ms. Stinson, you had been inquiring about, um, some portable hand stations. We did look those up. We did some costs for those. And we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna see if we can also include that in on some of the reimbursement funds from the, uh, CARES Act. I did talk to briefly, um, Denise Streethouse. She was actually calling for the mayor, but I asked her a few questions about how the money was gonna be distributed. And she was telling me that, um, first I had to contact her, uh, assistant because she wasn't, you know, up on everything on exactly how they, the process was gonna be, uh, how they were gonna distribute the money. But she says she believes it's gonna be through a grant process. So I believe that's gonna be most likely a reimbursement grant. So, um, I'll talk to her assistant, um, tomorrow and we'll see if we can get those. In the meantime, I'm still, um, keeping our log, our list of everything that we've had to purchase because of COVID nineteen, so we can submit all of that.
Ms. Mitchell, is there a question for the, um, yes, ma'am. manager?
Yes, ma'am. As for Ms. Pope, uh, when you check for the hand washing machines, is this to be, these, um, items to be bought or rented from Rumpkey? And how will we, I guess my concern is just keeping them from being vandalized. Are you looking at Rumpkey or is there somewhere else that we can get them?
Um, we looked, I just looked out on the internet right now. We didn't go through Rumpkey and we were looking for some commercial grade, something that can be actually mounted to the ground. I think the only thing that the Service Department would have to do is probably do the refill of the sanitizer, the foam. They may have to do that. So we were thinking about putting them, um, of course, at both of the Serenity Park, Memorial Park, the basketball court, and then maybe at some, uh, some, some of our most popular bus stops, so...
Ms. Childs-Jeter has a question.
You're on mute.
I want to say, Ms., to Ms. Pope, thank you for the opportunity, but please include my partner, Ms. Kathy Goodwin-Williams in that conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, um...
Our announcement?
I have an announcement and a question. I'm gonna ask the question to go with the, the reimbursement. We got an email saying how much money that the village would receive, so we, that's reimbursed money? Or are they cutting us a check for that money? I'm a little confused. Because what if communities don't have the money to buy something and then we gotta wait to be reimbursed? You know what I'm saying? How does that work?
I believe based on the, uh, original calculation, it was in one of the webinars where they told us how they were gonna calculate the percentage that, you know, each community would get. Our percent, our percentage through that calculation is one sixty-nine.
Yeah, I seen that.
Yeah, so I don't know if, uh, if we would even use that much, but that much would be available to us.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Vice, yes, Vice Mayor.
Because I'm wondering what's the, you, uh, okay, we'll have another discussion about that. Um, I did have an announcement and I forgot.
She froze.
I froze?
Yeah, you did for a second.
Okay.
Alright now.
Alright, um, Susan Wyder with the Princeton Closet has been in contact with me. She has quite a few, uh, um, items, food, uh, Kroger gift cards for families. And she, her, she's, she don't care who, who is in need, but her target is pretty much anybody that might be suffering from COVID nineteen because those people cannot get out to do their own grocery shopping. Those people are the people that's gonna be hit harder than our everyday people. So I, I wanted to make an announcement that if you know, or if you are someone who is in need, please contact Susan Wyder at the Princeton Closet, no matter what the need is, at eight six four, ten twenty-five. If you need help with anything, you can contact her or you can contact me. I don't mind toting you up there to get the stuff. Four eight five seven six zero one is my number. Please, if you need help, there's help out there. We want to help you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice. Okay, uh, Ms. Pope, I did want to say I was glad to hear about them tearing that, that they're gonna tear down that address because it's been, um, it's been a, a thorn in, for the village, I guess, for the last four years with the code enforcement. And then for it to be almost level to the ground, I'm glad that they're gonna possibly get that done. Did they say around what time or just depends on our, when we get our codes in?
That, and it depends on if, you know, the, hopefully the documentation, like, hopefully this guy doesn't fight us on tearing this building down. So I think that would probably be of concern to make sure that he knows it's coming down. I think Mr. Decide probably could answer that one because that would be a legal issue. Am I correct?
Right, so one of the questions in my mind is, first off, what address are we talking about?
It's ten, I think, I believe it's ten twenty-three bills.
Twenty, ten twenty-three bills, okay. And under what authority are we demolishing the structure?
Well, there has been a, uh, issue of condemnation already. And then there was another, um, the, from the Health Department, they were saying it was inhab, inhabitable, so, um, uh, and besides it being what, um, what's the word am I looking for? Blight, you, is unlivable, it's falling down, it's everything.
So, so this, so we have not exercised our powers, our, our home rule powers, our police powers to, um, condemn the building, declare it a nuisance property or anything of that nature.
I believe we have done that. And this is from, um, Carrie, uh, Merritt was originally working on this. And you had, uh, worked on that with her. So this is, you know, it, I guess it fell off, you know, sometime between, um, late eighteen and early nineteen whenever Carrie left, so... But the building has gotten worse, so...
Okay. So just generally speaking, um, because it, property is one of the things that is specifically, for example, enumerated in the Constitution, right? No one shall be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process of the law. Um, there needs to, you need to strictly follow the process. Um, why don't you let me take a look at where we are at with this? Um, we may have done everything that needs to be done at this point. Um, but I just want to make sure that, you know, in addition to issuing the notice of violation, in addition to issuing a condemnation order, that we followed our procedures because typically a resolution needs to be passed by council. A public hearing needs to be afforded to the property owner. Um, you know, and these are all just due process protections that are required. We may have done this, um, um, but let me just take a look at it. Um, but so I'm clear, we are looking to demolish this property pursuant to Lincoln Heights powers and home rule authority. We're, we're not being a facilitator simply for something the county is doing on its own. Is that...
No. No, you're right.
Okay. Alright, so ten twenty-three bills, I'll take a look at it. When is the, um, um, I mean, you're, how far away are you from actually bringing bulldozers out, so to speak?
Uh, we're still, you know, at the process of making sure that we are filling out the application correct and making sure that we have all the documentation attached to that application before we, uh, asked for, uh, three bids from specific, um, uh, contractors.
Okay. Alright, if you would, you know, obviously just, uh, let me, uh, take a look and, you know, don't take any, um, action, you know, in terms of actually stepping on the property or raising the building or anything like that until, uh, we've got confirmation that we've done everything we need to do. Um, but I'm sending an email to myself right now just to note that that needs to be looked into. And again, just confirm, ten twenty-three B is correct?
Yeah, if it's not ten, I'll confirm the address. Ten twenty-three, ten thirty, uh, I'll confirm it.
Okay.
Because I think you actually sent me the emails. You and the mayor, you sent me the emails, so I'll have to look at my emails then.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Ruby?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the property that you and I went by?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Is there any way that we can do some like emergency type of deal? Because I'm, that, that's really unsafe for the people to live next door and if somebody is living in, it, it's, it's bad. And it's almost like over on that other apartment. How fast can we make this process?
That, I, I don't know because they, I called down immediately after you guys sent me the email. And, um, um, I talked to, I think the guy's name is Tucker from the Health Department and he was on it and, um, he said he, he already did a condemnation letter and whatever else he needs to do. And he sent me another letter that he had written, uh, just for it being unsafe. So we already did that. I talked to Emily. She sent me the application. So like I said, me and Jamal are gonna work on that application and of course include Mr. Decide, so we know that we're doing everything. And there's twenty thousand dollars available for, I mean, at CDBG for our demolition, demolition grant and hopefully it won't cost more than that.
Okay. Um, Ms. Randolph?
Yes, I wanted to ask Ms. Donna if she could let me know what the correct address because right now for the minutes, I'm using the ten twenty-three. And if that's not the correct one, I want to make sure that it's correct for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Alright, so... Okay, is there a motion to accept, uh, the Assistant Finance Director, Finance Village Managers' report?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, Ms. Baber. It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Okay, is there any old business? No, I'm sorry, let's go back up. We cannot leave out Ms. Mitchell with her Finance Committee report.
That's okay, ma'am. Go ahead and do it. Go ahead and do it.
No, no.
You're out of time.
That's because you asked so many questions that by the time we get to do it...
That's alright, baby. If you don't ask questions, you won't know anything.
You are absolutely right. That is, you are absolutely right. Alright, we ready for you.
Alright, so this, um, particular report is, uh, from the April twentieth report and I'm just gonna, uh, quickly go through it because it is from, um, the January and February report. If you recall, we didn't have a meeting in, um, February because no one came and of course the meeting was canceled in March because of COVID. So that's why it appears to be that we are behind. Um... So we're doing those particular two months. Uh, the major expenses were, um, Rumpkey, the Village Administration truck, um, and the backhoe. Uh, we did see an increase in the tax earnings. Uh, the other thing that was important was the home improvement program that is opposed to, um, uh, provide a thousand dollars maximum, um, that has, um, uh, had been, um, allocated by, um, the county. And there was a question about the fraud payments, uh, from the former manager, um, and they were, um, not quite up to date. Payment had been made, but I don't think that the, um, payments had been made in accordance to the, um, um, to the agreement. And Ms. Pope, you can correct me that after I finish if that's not correct. Um... At that time, we passed the motion, uh, to approve the on behalf payments for Leggett and Schumar. And the action items were that the manager and staff were to prepare, um, a survey for the businesses, um, to find out how COVID nineteen has impacted them. Um, I don't think that that had been done. Uh, there was, um, update on the status of non-compliant businesses, so this was back in, um, in April. And so we heard from, um, Ms. Steven, Ms. Peterson tonight, so that definitely, definitely needs to be taken care of. And we were supposed to obtain the cost of hand washing stations, hand sanitizers for the village. And again, this was back from, from April. And at that time, our estimated twenty... And again, this was back from, from April. And at that time, our estimated twenty-two revenue was two point five million dollars for January. And the year-to-date revenue, um, for February was three hundred and fifteen thousand. That ends my report.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Pope?
I'll have a question. I just wanted to make sure Ms. Randolph knew that the address was ten twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Pope, could you clarify that about the fraud payments being behind?
Yes, I, um, still have not gotten in touch with anybody down at the county. I've left, um, several, I have a list of all the times I left a message and they have not called me back, uh, regarding her, um, Ms. Hopkins', um, uh, payments. The last one that she made was thirteen thousand. And, uh, because that did put her ahead of her scheduled monthly payments. Um, but she still has a balance due, of course, so, um, they haven't contacted me back. I talked to, um, uh, well, I talked to one guy when we first had this conversation and he said he was gonna check, uh, with the, uh, the, uh, parole officer on her case. And then since then, every time I leave a message, I just have to leave a message because they're not answering the phone and they're not calling me back.
Ms. Decide, I got a question. I'm about to come up there to you, uh, Vice. So Ms. Decide, when that happens, is it anything that you can do to try to find out why we're not getting payments? Because I thought. Mm-hmm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I can call like Ms. Pope, but, you know, this was all handled by the Hamilton County prosecutors. Um, so the restitution was set up as part of the criminal matter. Um, you know, we didn't have any involvement with it, so to speak. So I would be doing the same thing Ms. Pope does. I would be calling down to those same people, asking for information about, um, where the payments, um, when the payments are gonna start again. Uh, one question I do have, because I'm not sure if I understood correctly, is Ms. Pope, is she, is, has she missed payments? In other words, does, is she behind on the payment she owes? Or, or is she ahead of where she owes?
Well, supposedly, if you, you know, if you say that she's supposed to pay twelve hundred dollars a month, um, so technically she would, she's ahead because she paid thirteen thousand dollars. And that caught her, uh, all the way up to, and, and so she, a payment is not due, I want to say until like September. But since she has that outstanding balance, does that payment negate the fact that she still should be paying us towards her outstanding balance? And that's what my question was to them. And they have not, well, the first guy that I talked to, he said he was gonna check further into it with her parole officer. And, but also he let me know that she was not on a strict, a strict payment process, payment schedule, so.
What does that mean?
She wasn't on a strict payment process. I mean, they told her, you know, yeah, you gotta pay this back, but there was nothing written in stone on, um, um,
But if she paid.
What happened if she doesn't?
Exactly.
No, it's in there, it's, uh, it.
Yes, it is.
I thought that.
I, I thought it said something. And I guess my question is, if she paid up to thirteen thousand, if she paid thirteen thousand, did that catch her up? Meaning that she had missed some payments prior to that? Or was she current when she paid that thirteen thousand?
She was not current.
I thought she was past due.
She was not current, but she was not months past due. Like she.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, she owed for that month, you know, and then, so that went, if supposedly she has a twelve thousand, I mean, twelve hundred dollar a monthly payment, she's ahead. But because she has a balance, that a extremely large balance, you would think she would still be required to make her twelve hundred dollar a month payments.
Ms. Williams, I think, I thought, I saw you put your hand up. You done? She said, uh, Vice Mayor?
Okay, my question is, again, who follows up when people don't do what they signed off to say they are supposed to do? Who is the person that follows up to make sure that people that told us they're gonna do something, do what they say they're gonna do? What do we have to do? Not like them? Or, I don't understand who follows up on that?
That's what.
Say something that we make a, a rule about something, nobody follows up. And you can't be ahead if you owe. If you owe, you ain't ahead.
Well, what it is, is the resti- restitution process goes through Hamilton County. We report to the state under her finding for recovery, uh, case number, how much she has paid, when she paid, and all of that. It's not, uh, is she current or nothing? She's just, have she made a payment? When did she make a payment? How much did she make? We send that to her and that, uh, to the state. The county, on the other hand, i- is her reporting patrol officer. So she has to go down there.
I say, don't call email. If it ain't in writing, it never happens.
That's right. Send a, a formal letter. That's what I think Deepak needs to do.
Okay, but, uh, I've done that. What I'm saying is, we, uh, we actually don't have control over this.
I understand, but I think.
Do, the only thing we can do is keep calling and saying, what you gonna do? When you gonna do it? What can we do?
Whose responsibility is it to keep calling?
And she, we keep calling, we send letters. We still don't have control over this process. It's just not about control over.
Deepak, I think you need to step in on this one.
Yeah. There's nothing he can do because it went through the state and it went through.
But some, he can write to the prosecutors, he can write to the state. And, I mean, after all, you know what I'm saying? Somebody has to answer either the email or go directly to Joe.
I bet if she owed Wyoming, we would know something.
Yeah, because this seem like she getting a runaround. You know, this is not the first time she missed a payment and.
Mayor.
Ms. Goodwin-Williams, go ahead.
Oh, I, I am gonna say something. Uh, there was, uh, some stipulations in that, um, it, in that, um, for her restitution, yes. If she did not, um, make timely payment, she would forfeit her probation for jail time.
That's what I thought.
And then also, I will say, if it was any one of us, we'd be.
Thank you, I didn't want to say it.
We wouldn't even have this opportunity. We'd be under the jail. That's it.
I didn't want to say it.
Well, I said it.
And I seconded it.
I thought, there's four, five, and a six. There goes six right there. So we all are in agreement that something needs to be done. Yes, Ms. Jeter? No, I, I'm not in agreement because you don't know where she is. Is she legally where she's supposed to be as far as paying money back? And knowing, it may not apply to all of us. We always want to throw that out there, but that may not be true. So just need to find out. And I'm sure you can go through the prosecuting office and find out, or the state can go after. She is legally where she's supposed to be at. If she, if they told her that she had to pay twelve hundred dollars a month, she's ahead. My question to the prosecutors was, because she still has a balance, is, will she still be required to make, uh, that twelve hundred dollar payment? That's what I haven't had the answer to.
Not if, not if she's current. If she's current, no.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
I have to translate this.
I have a thirty-six, thirty-six month payment on my card. If I pay, uh, nine months of those upfront, can I wait to the tenth month and start paying it again? I'm, I'm where I'm supposed to be. So, you know, uh, I don't know what you do about that. Maybe I'm confused. No, I was just asking. I wanted to ask against that balance, wh- is she still required to continue to pay? Knowing that she is legally, she's ahead. And, and, and the document, did it say it was a monthly payment until the months are gone? Did they give her a time to have this finished? I, I can't even honestly say that I had seen her document. That's what I'm saying. That was through the state and through the county.
But.
But if it was one of us, that's not always true.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I remember seeing that once it was finished, seeing the document and what we said is in fact in there. She didn't do, complete the payment. But if what, um, Ms. Pope is saying, I understand you questioning, regardless of whether she's ahead of the payment, does it specify that she still has to make a monthly payment?
Right.
So what I can say from my experience, I don't know if that holds true in, you know, adult court. But in juvenile court, if they paid ahead of, um, their restitution schedule, then no. You don't, you're, you're fine. But I don't know if that holds true, you know, in a door, in adult, um, criminal court. And the other piece, um, as far as if it was any of, if it was any of us, we'd be under the jail. That's my opinion.
It is yours and only yours.
I wouldn't say only, but it is mine.
Well, the rest of, yeah, I disagree with.
Okay, alright. One more question so we can get on this vote and let y'all go home. Ms. Mitchell, were y'all already home?
My question is that.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that the thirteen thousand dollars was not a catch-up payment. Because if she had been missing a couple of payments, she had not been paying monthly, then there should have been some formal action taken. And that's what I, that's the question that I have. I have a problem if she paid the thirteen thousand, she want to be caught up. But if she had been delinquent up to that point, something should have happened prior to that. That's the question that I like for, that we need to know. And if she is behind, when, if we know we get our payment a certain time of the month, because she pays a certain time, if we don't get that, then she delinquent. And whatever those, uh, agreement was in her restitution, should be fully implemented.
Okay, well, she was behind and that payment caught her up from the amount that she was behind. And that payment also put her ahead. So, but still, with talking to them, uh, them being the, uh, uh, Hamilton County, uh, adult probation, they did not, uh, move forward with bringing her back to court at that time.
We need to ask for that.
Alright, Mr. Daniels and Ms. Decide. Ms. Daniels?
Just quick question, Ms. Pope. So with that payment, how many months ahead did that put her up? And then when is her quote-unquote next payment technically due?
So her next payment will be due in September. Because that payment was, I believe, uh, I believe it was in our March report, wasn't it, Ms. Mitchell? Our Mar- March finance report?
March or April?
It was, yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was the, um, it was the meeting date of April that I brought it up.
Okay.
Ms. Decide, did you want to, you had anything you want to add?
Not at this time, there.
Okay, alright, we gotta move on to new business.
Mayor, we need to get a motion to accept the report.
You know how long y'all been asking these questions?
Good questions, good conversation.
Good questions, but it's hard to get back on topic with about twenty-five questions.
Just a gentle reminder so we.
But I'm glad, hey, I'm glad we're having this conversation. We actually needed to have this conversation. So, um, to keep us all in the loop. Motion in order to accept the, uh, Finance Director slash Assistant Managers' report.
Was it her report or the finance report?
It was the, the finance report for April.
I'm motion to accept the finance report from April.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baber. Alright. Okay, any old business?
All in favor.
All in favor. These say, all in favor, any nays?
No.
Okay. No, I must be tired. Alright, old business, none. Okay, let's get down to the nitty-gritty with the new business. Is there a motion order, uh, uh, motion order to read by title only, or what's your pleasure, counsel, for Resolution Number twenty twenty R sixteen? Resolution approving the process to receive and disperse the coronavirus relief funds?
Some move?
Second. Read by title only.
Okay, it's been moved.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been moved in second to read by title only of Resolution twenty twenty R sixteen. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels. Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Ms. Baber?
Phyllis.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams. Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven eye votes, a vote, and the motion pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Ham- Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number twenty twenty dash R dash sixteen. A resolution approving the process to receive and disperse coronavirus relief funds.
Motion in order to suspend the rules.
Some move?
Second.
It's been moved in second to suspend the rules for the Resolution twenty twenty R sixteen. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. We have seven eye votes, the motion pass.
Motion in order to sus- to, uh, motion for passage of Resolution twenty twenty R sixteen.
Some move? Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven eye votes, the motion pass.
Motion order for the emergency clause of Resolution twenty twenty R sixteen.
Some move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven eye votes, the motion pass.
Alright. Motion in order for Resolution twenty twenty R seventeen, Resolution Appointing Dolores Lindsay to the Planning Commission. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Move the read by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second to read by title only of twenty twenty R seventeen. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven eye votes, the motion pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number twenty twenty dash R dash seventeen. Resolution Appointing Dolores Lindsay to the Planning Commission.
Motion in order to suspend the rules for Resolution 2020 R-17.
Some move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven i-votes, and the motion passed.
Okay. Motion for passage of Resolution Number 2020 R-17.
Some move? Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven a-votes, the motion passed.
Motion in order for the emergency clause of Resolution Number 2020 R-17.
Some move for the emergency clause?
Second.
It's been moved in second for the emergency clause of Resolution Number 2020 R-17. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Ca- Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
We have seven a-votes, the motion passed.
Motion in order to, for first reading of Resolution Number 2020 R-18, to read by title only.
Or what's your pleasure? By title only. Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Okay, Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven i-votes, the motion passed. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution Number 2020-R-18. Resolution adopting the 2021 tax budget for the Village of Lincoln Heights for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021, and submitting the same to the auditor of Hamilton County.
All right, that's that.
I forgot why we were doing just the first reading on this one. Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's to clear up some language before the July meeting.
And to add the.
Attachment.
Attachment, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, the next one is a first reading only for Resolution Number 2020 R-19.
Some move? Second.
It's been moved in second to read just a first reading and by title only, Resolution and 2020 R-19. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Sorry about that. We have seven i-votes, the motion passed. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution Number 2020-R-19. Resolution authorizing the renewal of the agreement with the Village of Woodlawn for fire protection and immersion, emergency medical services for the Village of Lincoln Heights, Ohio.
Girl, those. Any miscellaneous business?
Madam.
Okay, I got two. Councilman Daniels?
Just, just real quick. First, I just wanted to thank our Sheriff Department, as well as Evendale and Woodlawn Police Department for helping coordinate a mobile march that went through the neighborhood. And so I know, especially past month, we especially having conversations with the, with the county sheriff. So, you know, when they participate in the neighborhood, I also want to tell them thank you. So, thank you for that. And then also they helped with our graduation parade as well. And also would like to thank members of council that showed up and supported. And also Ms. Kathy Goodwin-Williams, who gave great insight on the economic piece, on how that gun range is affecting our, our community from an economic standpoint. So, just wanted to send out those thank yous and I will, I will use my time. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, so Mayor, I thought we were supposed to be having a resolution for acts, for the acts come, we did not, or where are we with that?
Okay, where we're at with that, we have to put it in the paper for thirty days, and that has been given to Ms. Viann. And then after that, we'll be voting on it at the end of July.
Okay, has it been put in the paper? Has it been put in the paper?
Yeah, we, we gave that information to her, I think, Thursday or Friday. And we sent that email also to Ms. Desai. So Viann did say she was putting it in a paper. Ms. Pope, are you available to, to clarify that? Because she did send an email to myself and Lisa.
I'm sorry, what did you ask?
She's asking about why we did not vote on the acts. One, we have, I told her we had to put in, put it in the paper for thirty days, which we had given that information to Viann, and she sent us the email saying that she was doing that. So could you clarify she was, she did that?
I'll check with her tomorrow.
Yeah, because she sent us the email, says that she did. Vice Mayor?
I was just gonna say, can she just send us a email confirming that it's been sent since it's time-sensitive?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we, she sent us the email. Hey, Ms. Randolph?
Yes.
What day did she send that to us? Was it Thursday or Friday?
Six, I'm not.
I'll send an email and let you know what day that she sent that to us, but it was taken care of.
And do you know what paper we're gonna send it to?
It would be the Cincinnati Enquirer. I think the Enquirer.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Baber?
I wanted to ask about that. I see that Habitat is building that house in back of that lady's house. What happened with that situation?
On side of her house?
Yes, well, it's actually the back of her house, but I thought we were gonna offer Habitat some more property or something, not to build there.
Mm-hmm, we did do that, but they opted to not, they opted, I guess, the area that, hold on. The area that she had, that Mr. Duke, he had asked them about that, but they decided to go with that area to do that. But we're not gonna, you know, I'll give y'all further information on it later.
Mayor, this is really important since she brought it up. I just have a quick question. It's the, the question was, when we gave them the okay to build there, I thought it was for four houses, not five.
I thought.
Or actually three.
I think, I think it was a total of four going there across there, I thought.
But this is a, this is a what? How many there?
It's four. It's four, and so Ms., like, when Ms., her name, Katrelle, I don't want to get her name wrong. When she came to spoke to us, we also, Mr. Duke also went and talked to her, and he informed her with, I think they had to give her easement or something, I'm not for sure. But he did reach out to her, and I think she called me and I called her back. We just said I'm unable to, to connect. Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, so if, okay, is their property, so is they're too close to Ms. Trails' property? And so is that the lot not big enough?
Well, I know that.
What's the issue? The setback?
The closeness of the house. So what they did, what they decided to do, instead of having her house right next to them, they're putting the driveway, the driveway next to her instead of the actual house. That's what we were informed.
But it is a forty-foot lot.
Yeah.
If, if you go up there and look, it's, it's super close.
And the side setback?
Yeah.
So, but, but the question is, is it, is it on the forty-foot lot? And the side yard setbacks the same? If not, they should have asked for a variance.
There's some question about that. I've had extensive conversation with her. She's the relative. And her concern is, she's saying that they are over on her property. That was one issue in the beginning. So, and then the issue became, for me, if we gave them permission to build three or four houses on there, I thought it was one less than what they're building there. And that is when Mr. Duke's went and asked, or offered them to build on a lot of their choice to keep from building a home close, you know, that close in proximity to hers. I feel like that would have been the good neighbor thing to do, to take us up on that offer. So now you have a long-term resident who is very unhappy. You know, and I, that's all I'll say about that, because I think it's still a legal issue for her. So that was the issue.
But it is their property, right? We didn't give that property to them.
No, it's their, it's their property.
I think what happened is they calculated wrong when they was calculating the distance between the houses. They calculated wrong at the beginning, so it put a whole thing off.
Yeah.
Ms. Childs-Jeter? The house is too close. The house is too close to the other person I came, came past the other day. And as I said to you, Mayor, that, that that house is too close. And they have already dug the basement and started building the house. But I don't, I don't understand that. I don't know how they're gonna get a driveway up in there unless they're gonna take part of this to, to Miss Trails' property.
I don't know, but it looks too close to me.
That's too close. That piece of property, that piece of property was given to him by the house that was that, that long house that was on there before.
That's when the other house, so that's when the other house came into play, when they bought that other property. Ms. Mitchell?
So, I would suggest that we look at calling in Mr. Mercer, we need to call, or either calling down to the county to come out and make sure that the lot is the exact size that it's supposed to be for building, and that we check out the side yard setbacks. I mean, we don't have someone doing that, but if, if there is an issue, then we either need the, as Hamilton County, to, to come out and check it out, or either we need to pay Mr. Mercer to do that. No system going on if we're not sure. We need to make sure that it is the right lot size.
Yeah, because I, I do know that they gave, I do know that when Mr. Duke went to look at it, they gave Mr. Duke some information on the size of that house. And that's when he offered to another property, but I wasn't, I don't think they were in agreement of what they would want. They wanted, I think, across the street, and Mr. Duke said we had additional lots that they could look at. And then they decided.
I have a question. I have a question.
Let me finish. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
It seems to me like if we're asking them not to do something and they still do it anyhow, or to just at least hold off until we can get down to the nitty-gritty of things, to me, that's, that's a privilege, doing what you want to do.
I, I don't think it was that. I think because of COVID, they did, they did wait for a while because Mr. Duke mentioned that they were not gonna build for a minute.
But you waited till you, till you get an answer. COVID slowing everything down, so everything's gonna take a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's people doing what they want to do. And we offered you something else, but you still gonna do that, because that's what you want to do?
I think what they, I think what they offered, we wouldn't, we didn't want to take what they wanted to build.
Well, just like we don't want what they doing. So what's the difference?
Childs-Jeter. Ms. Childs-Jeter.
I, I just want to ask Mr. Deepop, what options do we have?
The house is dug now. Where Ms. Desai?
Ain't no difference.
So, it would seem to me that Ms. Mitchell was correct. Because the way this works now is they submit their plans to Mr. Mercer. Mr. Mercer does two, two functions for us. He examines plans, and he also issues a zoning certificate to basically say, yes, you can build what you want to build in that particular area. After the village dissolved its building department, that was the end of Mr. Mercer's responsibility. In the past, he would have seen the process all the way through to the end. So we contracted out with Hamilton County. Hamilton County, then, once they are presented with that zoning certificate, they then take over the rest of the process. And so they would be the ones to contact to make sure that the building permit that they would have issued to Habitat for Humanity is in fact being built per the approved plans. And that's the piece of it that I was trying to wrap my head around is, well, wait a minute, if you changed the design of the house, did you go back through the process and get the approval for that? So what the county can do is the county can issue a stop work order if in fact they are not in compliance with the approved plans, which is what the permit to build would have been based on. So, what I'd suggest is typically, it's the aggrieved property owner that will contact Hamilton County. I don't know what the property owner's particular situation is. It might be that they're not able to do that. In which case, I would suggest having the Assistant Manager, Ms. Pope, contact the county. And she could certainly contact Mr. Mercer as well. I mean, he knows the village and those codes as well as anybody. But I, if the homeowner is unable to, you know, to contact the county building department, I would ask, you know, either Mr. Mercer or Ms. Pope to maybe do that. Because if I heard everything correctly, I don't know how you change your plans without getting approval on that.
Right, okay. That's good. Ms. Goodwin-Williams?
I'm just gonna say that the, the homeowner has, she's been inquiring about this ever since she realized that they were going to put another house there. It's been months. And she's been in contact with Mr. Duke, and he has tried to assist her in that. And so now she's contacted an attorney, and so she is capable of handling that. And so I'm sure the village will be hearing from her attorney as well as Habitat.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, I mean, as long as she's got, got the wherewithal, I mean, like, I, I know, you know, we, we, sometimes you have elderly people or people with disabilities or whatever. So it's, it's good to hear that that's not the situation. And I mean, this really shouldn't be rocket science. I mean, you, you get approved plans, you get a permit based on those plans, and you build it. And if you want to change your plans, you gotta put in, it's got a stupid name, it's called an engineering change. But basically, you gotta put in, you know, a request to change what you want to build, because that's what the permit is based on, is what you submitted you were going to build. So, and I'm sure her attorney is well aware of this, will be able to guide her through it.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
So in the meantime, Ms. Desai, should Ms. Pope contact the county or Mr. Mercer? So that we know, we don't want to have something, attorney contact us and we don't know, we don't have any information upfront. It seems to me we need to be asking Mr. Mercer or going back to the county to see if any change of order or change of plans and all of that has been done. And that's, that's the issue that I have when we, with, with, with Hamilton County. We have to ask for a report. They should automatically send us things when people get permits. I don't care if it's weekly, because we will not know. They should automatically send us things when people get permits. I don't care if it's weekly because we will not know. But I think that we need to take, be proactive and find out if the changes have been put on paper. We call Mr. Mercer in or we go to the county to see if that has been done.
Well, I don't think that's a bad idea. I mean, I can tell you, um, you know, um we, my firm represents Sycamore Township and uh Sycamore Township contracts out with the county. And they recently issued a final CO for a commercial piece of property that was not in compliance with the uh zoning plan. And, you know, uh basically we were told, oops, sorry, that's not our problem. So I, I don't think it's a bad idea to get a second set of eyes on it at all.
So do we have to motion for Ms. Pope to do that or it's just taken that she will do?
Please don't make that motion.
I, I have a feeling that you, you can just, um, you know, i- if you, if you want, um, I mean, you can, but I, I really, I mean, I think Ms. Pope's heard the conversation.
I just wanna make sure.
We don't, uh, ma'am, Madam Mayor, we don't uh need to make a mo-, you don't need to make a motion because I do have um following up with Mr. Duke's, um, following up with original conversation. I believe Habitat for Humanity was supposed to only build four homes right there. And then they, it was a total of six homes, but only four right there on Jackson. We have um information about four different addresses and then the other two were gonna be somewhere else. But I do have a, a permit that, cuz I did ask Mr. Mercer and he did um send me a copy of a z- zoning certificate of compliance, which was issued on two ten twenty twenty for six eleven Jackson Street. The owner tenant of that uh lot is Ham Habitat for Humanity, so. They did get a zoning permit for that. By Mr. Mercer.
That, that final zoning certificate of compliance i- is sort of a separate issue.
Right, yeah.
Um, I mean, they, they are related, but the issue that I'm hearing being brought up um is that the plans for the building may have been altered. So question one is, did they get approval for the revised plans? And then question two, um, and this would be a zoning matter, so I, I would presuming they built as they said, if Mr. Mercer signed off on a final zoning certificate compliance, then they would presumably be in compliance with the required setbacks. But that still leaves the question about the actual um modification to the building plans that were originally approved. Did they submit the proper paperwork to build something different, basically? Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
The question, please?
Yes, Ms. Baber.
Thank you. If they error on their calculations, so that would be um, they would have had to um uh make that known, correct? And then um get a, a new um, a new permit or whatever based on, on the error, correct?
Right, so if they, if their plans is originally approved had incorrect calculations, because it's very unu-, a very unusual situation where um a government agency is gonna go out there and, and second guess an architect's measurements, for example. Um, so if they discovered there was an error after getting the original plans approved, they, they would then have to modify the plans to still stay within compliance of the normal setbacks. Or as Ms. Mitchell said, if they were going to say, well, we can't do that, then they would have to seek a uh, an area variance to say, well, we can't be six feet back, but we can be four and a half or whatever it is. But, but your basic point, Ms. Baber, is correct. I mean, you, you can't just change your mind or make a mistake and then keep sailing down, you know, you know, just keep the train going down the tracks. You gotta stop. Yeah, you gotta stop and you've got to, you know, do new plans and you've gotta resubmit. So yeah, your basic point is accurate.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Charles Jeter?
Yes, I'm gonna take a second look when I drive through there because I feel that they all look too close to each other.
Uh-huh, they are. They seem like that.
Yeah, they look too close. I looked at the uh Hampton House on Adam Street down there. They are, they, they have some uh space there. These don't seem to have any space. Yeah, my opinion. And if they're going to build some more, that would be, if there's four there, there's one across the street, so that's five. Where the sixth one gonna go?
I thought they had a lot down on Simmons.
Oh, okay, so that, that would be the seven. If they plan on uh doing any more, then they need to uh consider having some more space in between.
They're not building on that corner, are they?
If these uh, if these families have children, that's a little too tight. Unless you're gonna make them a rowhouse.
We need to pay somebody to come out and just double check it. That's Mr. Mercer. So we, I mean, we just need to know if there's a concern because they do look close. They, they don't look like regular setback. We need to know. I mean, much as I, I do like Habitat houses, you know, we still need to process to be right and not just do it because it is your property, but follow the, follow the guidelines. And so we just need to pay for somebody to come and check it and be correct.
Okay. All right, is there anything, any other miscellaneous business? Okay, so before we go adjourning thing, I did want to bring up regarding the shooting range on a, a village perspective, um, just to give whoever's watching the residents, cuz I know they've seen a lot on TV. And I don't want them to think that uh council is uh having secret meetings or whatever. But I did wanna start out by saying, like, talk about the beginning. When I first got, before even got on council, I went and talked to um Councilwoman Yvette Simpson. Uh, at the time, it was interim Chief Isaacs. Uh, Ms. Mitchell, uh, she went and we went down and talked to them along with um Councilman uh Ceas, uh, is it, um, what's his name? Wendell Young. So we went and we talked about uh Yvette Simpson is, while she was running for mayor. Um, her concern like ours was regarding the shooting range because she did, she did experience the same thing by living in Marion, the terrace. So that happened at the end of twenty fifteen. So when I did get on council, um um, we continued to talk about the shooting range and it started to get worse and worse and worse. So in comes the twenty um, twenty nineteen. And so we, I sent the letter out in July, as you all know, cuz every time that we um conversated with them, I shared that. We talked about it in council, in council meetings and regular council meeting. I don't know. I don't remember us discussing the shooting range in law, maybe possibly safety, but I don't remember it being on the agenda at the Law Committee. But I just wanted to, to put that out there, that as council members, we are concerned about uh the shooting range. We've had numerous conversations um at, at the council meetings, so the residents will be able to understand it. But um the letter went out in July. I got a response back from um uh Vice Mayor Smithman, which uh Councilmember uh David Mann, he's the one that put in a, he's the one uh brought it up and they put it in the law and safety at the City of Cincinnati. After that, we were able to, me and the mayors, we had got together earlier, uh Vice uh, at the time for Woodline, it was Vice Mayor uh Poole. Now he's uh the mayor and uh Mayor Mason of Lockland. We both went, all three went over to meet Mayor Finan and we talked about our concerns with all our villages, especially Woodline and Lincoln Heights having to endure the shooting range. And it was getting worser and we talked about that at our regular council meetings and committee of the whole. So after that, um, after waiting for them to um allow us to come down because we were waiting for, for, just for a little, for a little bit, a couple of months. And then we were able to go. At that time, Mr. Duke, he, he had came. We went down, did a PowerPoint presentation on, it looks like December, the um, December sixth. And uh that information was also put in all the council members uh packet when we met that same Monday, uh letting you all know that we did a PowerPoint presentation, which also was a handout given to the Law Committee for the City of Cincinnati along with pictures. So all the council got this. We also actually discussed it for our residents on that same day, which we met at eight thirty for City of Cincinnati, but we met for council that night. So I just wanted to let everybody know, our residents to know that, that the village of Woodline and Lincoln Heights, the mayors, we took the initiative to go down there with the concern at putting our residents first. So I just wanted to let, let that be known, so no one seems to think that we're, we're not uh caring about it. Now, as far as doing a uh, I guess, a community uh benefits agreement, we haven't even got there yet because of the COVID. We've been, um, we was gonna, we was gonna meet the first of the year and then after the first of the year, we had a conference call. I shared that information with council. Last email I got when we was gonna try to get together is that they told us that they had looked for a, uh, council had voted, the City of Cincinnati had voted on finding a temporary sh- shooting range while they're waiting for another shooting range. So I just wanted to say that for whoever's listening and council. And I also had emailed council to make sure that I'm just as transparent as I can be. I share everything with you all. I don't have anything to hide. The, the, the council doesn't have anything to hide, regardless of what anybody thinks. And if I get any more information, I'm gonna definitely share. But as far as a community uh benefits agreement, we haven't even got there to even discuss that yet. We're still right now, we wanna get it moved like right away, but Rome was not built on the day. Rome wasn't built overnight. So yes, I wanna make sure that we cross our I's and dot our T's, but I also wanna act civilized on what we trying to do as a village. Cuz at the end of the day, our, our responsibility is to make sure that our residents are protected and to make sure that we go do what we need to do. Our thing is to be assertive, not aggressive. And I just wanted to say that.
Can I speak? Can I speak?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Um, I, I believe this has been trying, people, folk in the community have been trying to get the gun range moved longer than even what you just mentioned. I had thoughts too about the, the protest. It was nothing aggressive. It was nothing negative. Everybody that spoke didn't have nothing but positive things to say about Lincoln Heights. I learned some new information. I learned a lot of new information about the sound and how it affects kids in school. That information alone was good. And another thing that was good about that, they listened. I have been getting phone calls. I've been seeing things posted on Facebook, not just within the village, but people out in the city who are seeing the uh injustice from that, that gun range. And they're ready to come and help support. So the fact that more people than just the people on Lincoln Heights became aware and is willing to help, cuz we can't do it by ourselves. We cannot do it by ourselves and it's been years. It's been years. It's because Evendale is gonna have something to say. They don't want it anymore cuz they can't make the money that they trying to get.
But then they should speak up.
That's, exactly.
And stop letting us do the work. Speak up then. They need to speak up.
Not cuz they already know they got it in the bag.
Did you have something to say? I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so yes, we have been every, and I've stated this before, so every ten years, just about um, a mayor or a village manager has gone down to talk about the gun range. I've been down there three times in my, my terms on council. So it is about relationship building. Um, I think that some of the things that have been put out um have, in some ways, um cast a um, a negative light on council as a whole because it appears that based on the people I talked to, y'all haven't done anything. Well, we have done some things and what the mayor has been able to accomplish, getting the other mayors together is a um, you know, it is a step. And so no matter what we do, um, it is not going to happen right away. I do agree with Ms. Jensen and I have intimated this to the mayor before, that um it depends on who has to benefit from this. And Evendale definitely does um because of the Arrow Hub. So, but what, we have to be acting together and we, we cannot have um an outside organization say what it is that we need. We need to say, these are the things that we wanna do and we take that to an organization. What I'm saying is
Yeah, I, I, you want me to shut up? Now I'll tell you what, I'm out.
I just wanna finish. And I'm saying that we have to decide what it is that we want. So when you start having uh another organization say, this is what the village ought to do, this is what Lincoln Heights ought to do, that should first come to council and be talked about, not there in the open community without us agreeing with that. And so all I'm saying is we do have to work together and we have to show a united front. So as long as we look divided, okay.
But we are.
Upper hand. Well, we are, but that's because we need to come together and talk about what we want and what the plan is and how do we do it. We don't need to be doing it two different ways unless that's the plan. And so right now, there's no plan and that's what we need to be doing. And it is clear that that area over there, um, i- it's been stated, oh, Lincoln Heights ought to get this. We don't want that property because number one, we'd have to clean it up.
That's not true. So you speaking for the whole council?
Look at whether or not we can get that. All right, so yes, we need to come together and talk about it. We all have different ideas. But when you have other individuals indicating what we should do, we need to first find out what it is council wants to do and how council wants to handle it and then call in your reinforcements. But I also think that we have to give it an opportunity for what uh mayor and uh Mr. Poole and Mr. Mason may have done. Um, I think it's nice and Mr. Finan and, and got a lot, big, a lot, a good relationship with Mr. Finan, with Mayor Finan. But we also know that, that Evendale has um, has an upper hand with it because it is in their jurisdiction. And I'm just, everybody wants it gone. Everybody wants it the best way to do it and that's for quote leaders to come together, not just some saying this and some saying that. So that needs to be done and perhaps that's what the mayor and Brian Poole and Mayor Mason need to do and call folks together along with um Mayor Cranley. Mayor Cranley needs to be contacted and said, hey, this is where we are. We wanna know where you are. What are you all doing? So it, because it's all about timing.
Ms. Charles Jeter?
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know I was off and then I was off and back on. So what I wanna say is that uh someone called me about the Kathy or I'm not sure who, there's only two of you there about uh someone talking about council wasn't there. A couple of things that I have a problem with is that the protest was fine with me. But uh because I wasn't there, it wasn't an open invite uh to council. It was a movement piece and two council members that were involved in it. I don't mind supporting that, but please don't tell folks what I'm not doing uh because you don't know. And that's what I wanna say about. That was what came to me. If they said it wrong, then I apologize to the people that were there. You know, but I was at a event on Saturday for the graduate where you had a recreation committee that was working with Ms. Baber. I saw you all in the parking lot. By the time I backed out, folks had disappeared and I got in the back of the line. So there were no uh So, there were no uh uh high school students involved in that uh uh high school graduates involved in that parade and and the committee wasn't there. So, you know, we can't be in all the places you want us to be, but it doesn't mean that we don't support what you're doing. Now, what I'd like for you to do with the movement piece is get these folks out here to fill out the census so we have a steady. Uh, and also get folks out to vote. So, if you can help me on that point, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Goodwin-Williams.
So, um what I'll say about that is, I don't know of anybody who talked about a collaborative agreement in reference um to the um the gun range. I was speaking in reference to something else. I, yeah. So, the other piece is, yes, I did make reference to the fact that council was not there um at the uh protest. And, okay, so you had some other things to do. I just acknowledged the fact that you weren't there. I think everybody knew that it was happening. So, you had some other things to do. You made a choice to go do whatever it was that you needed to do that day. And I think that.
I didn't know about it.
I'm, I I didn't talk. I I didn't, I let y'all say what y'all needed to say. I gotta be quick about this. And the other piece is, I do think that both council and the movement want the same thing as well as the residents. We want gun range gone. So, that is a consensus that we have that, you know, we want it gone. Uh, the movement wants it gone. The residents as a whole want, wants the gun range to go. And then the other um the other thing about the about Saturday, what you were speaking about, about the parade. I don't um believe in rewarding, I don't wanna say bad behavior, but um, you know, the the students who were select, who um determined that they wanted to participate, gave their names or their family members did, none of them showed up. So, I'm not going to, I'm not one to, you 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 telling me that you don't want what it is that we have for you. So, I'm not gonna chase you down. We stayed there for at least a half hour to almost forty-five minutes, waiting for students to show up. Uh, and and God bless um Ms. Baber. She does have a heart for that, but I don't. I'm not gonna do that. Those are young adults. They agreed to be there. They made the decision not to show up. So, you know, if we still have the items for them that they um, that we purchased for them, I think maybe they could pick them up around the corner, but I'm not gonna hand deliver um items to grown, half-grown folks. So, that's where I am with that.
Mr. Daniels, did you have something you wanna say?
I I I'll chime in. I'll leave you with this. Uh, what it what it sounds like, and I wanna make sure that I'm clear, that um what it sounds like is that the movement has not reached out or has invited members of council to participate in this conversation that has taken place since, in our mind, frame of mind, since November. Is that what we're asking? Is that what we're saying right now, that we have not talked about and strategized with members of council since November? Is that, I'm just making sure that's what I'm clear on?
That's what I'm saying, Mr. Daniels.
Okay, so that's the right there, right there, right there is false.
This is my meeting. We're not gonna go there.
When Mr. Collins came, it's only one time that I'm aware of.
So, I'm just letting you know right now. So, that's what I'm saying, what you're aware of. I'm gonna let you know right now, there's been members of council, there's been highly members of council that's been in meetings with Senator Sherrod Brown's committee, with doctors from UC Health, that have talked about and strategized this piece. So, this was not no willy-nilly thing that came together. People that's been in this room. So, when you talk about folks that just pulling things out they, out of whatever, that's not even the case at all. So, people have known for three weeks in advance that the this rally was going to take place, when an interviewer person came about. People have known about the strategy of this that's going to place back since November of two thousand and nineteen. So, when you talk about due diligence, it's not my job to tell other members of council to participate when you know all the time we meet. You know, you've talked to me about your meeting every Saturday and when we're doing these meetings. You know when the heist movement meets? So, it's the same thing. I'm sorry, I'm stealing my time. That's fine. It's fine.
I haven't been there.
Well, wait, wait. So, let me finish what I have to say. So, for Ms. Goodwin-Williams, if I um, I would have came, but I ha- I do, and and I am an essential worker. I do taxes, so that's why I could not attend because I have to work at H and R Block till the end of July fifteenth, or I possibly would have showed up. So, I just wanted to let you know that.
I was there.
Huh?
I was there at the uh, at the park, you know. So, I'm just saying a lot of, you know, um, I was there. Um, I did not come to the rally, but I did come to when they ended up at uh Mariana Terrace. And I just think the mayor, that if if there are individuals meeting and if they're not letting you know because you are the designated the leader for the village, that information need to be funneled to you and the other mayors so that when you are talking to the people that you're talking to, everybody is saying the same thing. And that is not what I see. Now, Mr. Daniels.
That group has a right to assemble. They have a right to assemble.
Assemble, Ms. Baber.
And they they have a right to assemble and put together, they're a group within the community who is trying to do good for the community. And just like I said.
I'm not negating that.
Okay, but they have a right to assemble. They don't have to notify us about anything.
What I'm saying is, right now, the man.
Hold on, wait a minute, go ahead.
They have a right to assemble. They do not have to notify. The only thing that they had to notify about was Evendale because they did the parade or whatever communities were affected that they had to go through, but they have the right to assemble. I'm gonna say this one last thing and I'm I'm done with this conversation. And so, ma'am, I respect what you and the other mayors have done because when we came into council in two thousand and sixteen, we brought the gun range up again as an issue. So, I respect what what it is that you're doing and I respect that sometimes it takes time. But at the same time, sometimes it takes a little bit of something different to put some fire under under that situation like that and bring some more visibility to it because I'm gonna compare it to what right now, the Black Lives Matter protests in the street. Had that not happened across the world, we wouldn't have all of all of these things that are happening in reference to it right now. And that's where I'm gonna leave it. Sometimes it takes a little bit of something different and it's okay. Everybody has a different way of handling it. I am a person, depending on what what um the situation is, I will get out there and make some noise, depending on what it is.
Ma'am, I just wanna say that I just hope that anybody who was working on this issue will let you know because when the end comes down, if there's any negotiation, it should be you for the Village of Lincoln Heights. And so, whenever anybody is meeting, and I'm not talking about the rally or, uh, everybody got a right to say anything. But when somebody is going out representing the Village of Lincoln Heights without the entire county or either the mayor knowing what is going on, so that when she goes to do her conversation, she is aware and she can refer to that. Nobody's trying to say nobody can't uh assemble, Ms. Williams. I'm talking about the meetings that Mr. Daniels has talked about. I have not been um on those meetings on Saturdays. I haven't been there to those meetings one time and that was about the pantry. So, he is highly mistaken. But anything that somebody is doing, the Heist Movement, L H O I, if they uh, they should be also coming back and saying, look, ma'am, this is what we've been doing. And then she can share that with us. Well, because we're all of us can be privy to somebody's conversation or their comments. We wanna be able to say the same message, but when you don't know, then somebody's gonna repeat some misinformation and that's the worst thing that can happen. And that's all I'm saying.
And I agree with you. I agree.
Know what's being said.
I agree. And those are the issues that I've had. Those are the issues that I've had with the heist movement previously, the same thing that you said. So, we've had the conversation and continue to have the conversation that in that instance, I agree with you one hundred percent. Nobody should be speaking in reference to government issues of the village except for council members and the mayor or respective to your committee. I agree with you on that.
I will say that um I talked to Councilman Daniels, but that's af- that's after I was informed about it on Facebook and he told me what he was gonna do, but I didn't know what time or anything. Um, I wasn't invited to speak, which, and that's fine because that's like you said, that's their heist movement and I'm promoting this, but I just wish that we could work together. Um, you know, because like you said, we all want 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 the shooting range to go. We really do. But what makes us look bad is when we're divided, you know.
Yeah, well, we have to stop doing the things that make us divided. That's what has to happen.
That goes, that goes both ways. Yes, Ms. Charles Jeter?
I have two things. One is that Carlton sent you all uh history of Lincoln Heights, sent everybody that. Okay, I just wanted to know because uh I I think he doesn't think I know the history of Lincoln Heights, so.
None of us.
I- if you live here long enough, you know uh a lot of the history of Lincoln Heights. Now, you may have participated in moving it forward or you have done nothing, you know. So, you know, okay, I'm 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 good with the movement, but I want the movement to do some other things too. Yeah.
Yeah, we really need some help with the census and everybody need to get out and vote.
Yeah. So, and one thing may have, may have happened as a result of the protest. It may uh make some folks move a little faster. So, you know, I'm I'm not against it, but yeah, I'm not against it, but you can't accuse me of not coming because you don't see me. You know, I, that that part I had an issue with, you know. Uh, we had two fine representatives or three, according to Ms. Mitchell, and you were there. You represented the us. So, you know, that's all that needed to be said. We're here.
Ms. Baber? She's still on there?
This baby, she's still there, yeah.
I'm still here. I'm still here.
Did you want, did you have anything?
Only thing I wanted to say is that I I was not around in November, so I didn't know anything about it. But um like, like I said, we do all want that shooting range to leave.
Mm-hmm.
And have been working on it.
Yeah. I wanna thank you too, Ms. Baber. Um, Ms. Ms. Baber, I I um also wanna thank you for your efforts with the kids and everything. And uh I just had to leave a little laughter with you. So, Kevvy Kev said that you was speeding around like you was throwing papers, um but he didn't. He did enjoy that.
No, he didn't.
Yes, he did. That was a little laughter ending out.
That's okay, Ms. Baber. Pay for your house, didn't it?
Chop and the food was good. And when we get off the air, I wanna find out who made them baked beans. Did you make them? They were awesome.
My daughter made them.
Okay, tell, I ain't gonna steal the recipe, but they were very good. So, thank you for providing the meals. They don't know what they, it was a treat and I appreciate your efforts for what you did. Okay. All right, so there's nothing for. Yes, ma'am.
Before you hang up, I just, before you cut us off, I wanna say congratulations to the class of twenty twenty.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's all of them. All right. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
One, two, three, four. Yes.
Motion.
Join the meeting.
Motion.
Okay, all in favor? Uh-huh. All right, have a good night. Mrs. Steve Park, we're keeping you in prayer.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Yes.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, everybody.